Thank you councillors, welcome back. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and as traditional custodians, we acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dance, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. As we do at the beginning of all new sessions, I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare prescribed and/or declarable conflicts of interest where relevant and the requirement as such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Marks will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton, that councillor Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the city of Brisbane marks with great sadness the loss of life that has occurred in the communities throughout Turkeya and Syria. We support every effort being made by the Commonwealth Government to help restore those affected communities. On behalf of the city of Brisbane, we pass on our deepest condolences to those who have lost family members and loved ones in these earthquake tragedies.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the city of Brisbane marks with great sadness the loss of life that has occurred in communities throughout Turkeya and Syria. We support every effort being made by the Commonwealth Government to help restore these affected local communities. On behalf of the city of Brisbane, we pass on our deepest condolences to those who have lost family members and loved ones in these earthquake tragedies. Lord Mayor.
Two Mondays ago, at approximately 4am in the morning or 11am Brisbane time, two deadly earthquakes hit the city of Gazianti in south central Turkeya. These earthquakes registered an incredible 7.7 and 7.8 magnitude, which stretched across 10 cities and seven provinces. Given the timing of the earthquake in the middle of the night, most of those who have passed away would have been asleep at the time. This is an absolutely devastating situation and our thoughts are with all members of the Turkeya community, both here in Brisbane and abroad, and also Syrian community. The deputy mayor recently met with representatives from both the Turkish and Syrian community in Brisbane last Friday to convey our city's concern for them and also to offer our support and anything that we could do to support them in this time of need. As we do, we obviously lit up our council assets in a public display of support to one of those who had lost their lives in the earthquake. A condolence book was arranged and placed in the entrance of City Hall for the public to leave messages. There are over 800 Turkish-born Australian citizens within the Brisbane City Council area who are either grieving or worrying about loved ones back home. They're searching for information and they are getting very little information in response. Now, this country and this democracy that we live in is a democracy that values every single life. And we know from our own experience as a city last year when we had the devastating floods, every life that is lost is a tragedy and one that is important. And so in that context, to think about, you know, what we went through last year with the flood, but then to think of a death toll of 33,000 lives so far, 33,000, is incomprehensible. Each one of those lives important, each one of those lives, a son or a daughter, a brother or sister, a mother or father, a grandparent, a loved one. And most importantly, the challenge of not knowing Turkish community in Australia, the Syrian community in Australia, not knowing what has happened to their loved ones. And that is the biggest challenge right now, not knowing, not having access to that information. So many of those lives that are lost were buried underneath mountains of rubble. And in fact, there were 8,400 buildings which have already collapsed or needed to be demolished, 8,400 buildings. Over 100,000 people have been displaced, their homes destroyed. And so these kind of figures are, as I said, incomprehensible. And so we, here in the city of Brisbane, want the people of Turkeya and Syria to know that our hearts go out to you. Our hearts are with the local Turkish community, the local Syrian community, but also for those back home. We are thinking of them, we want to do what we can, both as a city and as a nation, to support them. I understand the federal government was quick to act, pledging $10 million in aid to the affected governments and to the affected areas, and I congratulate the government for that quick response. This aid will be provided through our partners on the ground like Red Cross, Red Crescent, the United Nations Children's Fund, to focus on immediate needs like shelter, clean water and sanitation. Australia's also sending a rescue team of 72 people to help with the recovery. With the federal government doing its bit and with us being the largest council in Australia, I think it's appropriate that we do more than just offer our words of support and our thoughts and prayers, but that we also offer some practical support as well. And so yesterday, Civic Cabinet decided that on behalf of the city of Brisbane, we will be donating $25,000 to UNICEF to support the relief efforts. We have heard very clearly that while people want to send things over to support, that right now it is money that is the much needed thing. It is difficult at the moment to get any goods or supplies into those countries. And in fact, many of the airports are out of action, the roads are out of action, there's no way of getting supplies in. So right now, funding is the critical need. And so on behalf of the people of Brisbane, we would like to provide this donation, on behalf of everyone in this chamber, we would like to provide that support and also encourage people in the Brisbane community that are concerned to also consider giving and supporting those relief efforts. As I said, our hearts go out for the tragic loss of life, the unthinkable tragedy that's happened, and our thoughts and prayers are with the people of Turkeya and Syria at this time.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to second this motion and on behalf of our team in council and the communities we represent, extend our deepest condolences to those who have been affected by these earthquakes in Turkeya and Syria, as well as the Turkish and Syrian communities here in Brisbane, who are no doubt hurting too. We know there are thousands of people originally from Syria and Turkeya who call Brisbane home now, and there's a significant Syrian community very close to my ward over in Brackenridge as well, and I know they will be hurting at the moment. Brisbane is of course the city that is no stranger to natural disasters, but we are very fortunate to have never seen anything on the scale of this tragedy. More than 35,000 people now have died across Turkeya and Syria following those two devastating earthquakes and numerous aftershocks that have hit the region since February 6th. The earthquakes have also caused widespread damage to schools and other essential infrastructure, further jeopardising the wellbeing of children and families. Access to safe water and sanitation is also a major concern, as are the health needs of the affected populations. Up to 7 million children are now displaced in that region. The most important thing an organisation like the Brisbane City Council can do in a time like this is provide financial support, and I'm glad to hear that Brisbane will be offering that $25,000 contribution. And as this disaster continues to unfold and the needs of those many millions of people need to be met over the coming months and years, I certainly hope we will keep an eye on that and adjust that support as needed as well. The people affected in Syria and Turkeya are in desperate need of clean drinking water, food, emergency shelter and medicine. So I would echo the words of the Lord Mayor, the best thing that we can do is offer financial support rather than collecting things and trying to provide them in their desperate need of hour at the moment. UNICEF has estimated that on top of that rising death tolls, I mentioned, 7 million children and families have been affected. Many of those families have lost their homes and are now living in temporary shelters, often in freezing conditions with snow and rain adding to their suffering. It is unimaginable for people like us sitting in this chamber right now to try and picture what those people are going through. So once again, we'd like to send our deepest condolences to those affected by this tragedy. Thank the Lord Mayor and council for the financial contribution and encourage people right around Brisbane to dig deep for these people in their time of need.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers?
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I'd like to add my support to the motion before us today and to just let people know that the city of Brisbane obviously is very aware of the impact of this natural disaster. Unfortunately, our country has seen so many natural disasters over the years, and the loss of life that has been experienced here is far beyond anything that we've seen in Brisbane in recent years. I do feel however, that the Lord Mayor's response today is completely inadequate. I suspect his recent trip to the US costs more than the $25,000 that he's putting in, and I just don't think that's appropriate. So if we're going to help, we should do it properly, we should do it practically, and we should be able to make a real difference to the people who are suffering in this part of the world.
Any further speakers? Lord Mayor? I now put the motion, all in favour of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. May I have confirmation of minutes, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,699th meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of December 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
I think it has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,699th meeting of council held on 6 December 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant here this morning, Mrs Lynne Wright. Sorry, my apologies, Mrs Lynne White, who wants to address the chamber on the resumption of land at 316 Priestdale Road, Rochdale. Mrs White, please, Billy is showing you to the position. Mrs White, you have five minutes and a Civic Cabinet Chair will respond. Thank you.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, my name is Lynne White, and I'm here today as a matter concerning the resumption of 8.6 metres deep, or 215 square metres of our front yard, is being put before you for resumption approval. Our front yard is an integral part of our family life and our grandchildren's play area. We'll virtually be left sitting on the road with no front yard and we have no backyard. It is important to note that the basis of our land resumption in the notice to resume was not for the purpose of four-lane road widening, but for the purposes of the Gardiner Road to Underwood Road extension project. What is very important for you to know today is that City Projects Office provided a second set of design drawings to us after the objection period. We have not been provided with the opportunity to properly respond to and assess this second drawing as part of our objection process and have it reviewed by an independent resumption delegate, thereby denying us as objectors of our rights in this process. We believe City Projects have not included this important information in the information they have put before the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the full council. Further, I requested City Projects Office that a very important letter outlining the legal reasons why the resumption is legally wrong also be put before members of the Establishment Committee and full council prior to today's session, and was told by City Projects Office this was not possible also. It is important to note that comments made by City Projects Office in a series of letter exchanges illustrate a reason other than that noted in the notice of intention to resume our land and demonstrates the legal incorrectness of this resumption, rendering the notice to resume, intention to resume, we believe to be legally invalid. Council does not require all of our land for the Gardiner Road to Underwood Road extension project. As for the second drawings, it would appear council is leaving what appears to be a massive grass verge of approximately eight metres to the immediate west of our property and proposing to resume 8.6 metres of our front yard to just sit there for the next 20 years or so in case, just in case Priestdale Road is ever widened to four lanes, thereby depriving us and our family of our enjoyment of it. Please note the inconsistency that it was shown in council's traffic flow statistics and information that Priestdale Road is neither earmark for four lanes and does not warrant four lanes based on traffic flow information, either in the short or long term. This makes absolutely no sense at all. We question whether City Projects have ever really sat down together with the design team, looked at the designs, looked at other options and asked the question, do we really need to be resuming 8.6 metres of the Whites' front yard for the extension of the Gardiner Road to Underwood Road project? Because if they did, they would determine that there are other options that could reduce the resumption of land off our property with a view to minimising the impact of a resumption on a resident as stated in council's own documentation attached with the notice to resume. I've not experienced this whatsoever in this whole entire process and my experience with City Projects to date. We've observed where other councils have actually built roads around trees. We are living, breathing human beings, we have a family, the front yard is our recreational area and where our grandchildren play, and we're not being given the compromise and courtesy of reducing our resumption to only what is required, if anything at all, for this Gardiner Road to Underwood Road extension, the basis of the resumption. There are other design options available to minimise the impact of this resumption on our property and our family. Council needs to be looking at these other options further. At no time has City Projects discussed any form of compromise with us for other options, the response has been constantly a negative narrative. The project appears rushed, there are a lot of questions, inconsistencies, discussions, more clarity and due diligence required surrounding the Gardiner Road to Underwood Road project, and the main question being more consideration of the amount of land, if any, that is required to be resumed from our property for this project. A City Projects Officer first knocked on our door and he advised council intends to resume a couple of metres of your land. We were shocked to receive the notice of intention of remit stated council wants more than 8.6 metres deep of our front yard, a considerable difference to just a couple of metres. We do not want council City Projects Office to make a huge mistake, which we know and believe they are making, with the resumption of 8.6 metres of our land. It is for these reasons we ask that the decision concerning the resumption of land from our property be put on hold at this stage by full council until more diligence, clearer designs, consistency of information and some compromises made regarding the resumption of our entire front yard and our property, and until such time as full, complete and correct information is put before the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the full council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs White, your time has expired. Civic Cabinet Chair to respond, councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Mrs White, for taking the time to come and speak with us today. My name is Andrew Wines, I'm the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, and I have carriage of the Gardiner Road projects. Can I also acknowledge councillor Huang and his personal advocacy on your behalf as well? As you can appreciate, the part of the city where you live is a growing part of the city with increasing population, both on our side of the boundary and on the Logan's side of the boundary. To maintain and to properly service that growth in population, we do have to maintain and improve the infrastructure in that part of our city. I would imagine that you are familiar with the recent works of the Priestdale and Rochdale intersection, which were recently completed, they wouldn't be far from your home, but further information was provided to committee this morning on that particular intersection. And also, the Rochdale area is also a principal part of our metro works with the housing of the depot in that community as well. Because of the changes required from the metro, we are required to upgrade the road network in the Rochdale area. There are a number of projects proposed which include the Gardiner Road extension, which is the project that concerns your property, but also other projects as I've discussed, such as that Rochdale Priestdale intersection. Can I say that I find resumption of private property a deeply unpleasant, an uncomfortable part of road construction? It's not something that I enjoy, I don't think that any of us enjoy it, but it is at times something that is necessary to ensure that we achieve the outcome for the greater community. The Gardiner extension, it's important, infrastructure investment which is much needed for the future of that area, and we expect that upon completion, it will carry roughly 14,000 vehicles per day, at completion or nearly after the road corridor has been concluded. There have been, there was a number of concerning comments you made in your presentation, and I'd be keen to see the paperwork around those. I have discussed with our officers the process around the NIR, the Notice of Intention to Resume and the land resumption process. The process proposed for your property is consistent with all other processes for other resumptions that we have undertaken, and I would like to see the paperwork you have, but at this point, I have not seen an inconsistency internally, but again, your paperwork may indicate something that I am not aware of. There were some other issues that were raised outside of the presentation today, but the council does possess the power to resume for the purposes of transport, which includes bikeways, and I think that that at some points has been a point of contention. So the project does include four-laning, the project does include a verge, and does include bikeways and some parking facilities. The Carriageway, which includes all forms of transport, is considered, or is contemplated within the Acquisitions Act. So there are some important points, please pass on all your paperwork. The Gardiner Road extension is a key part of our programme for the south-east of the city. Please accept my sincere empathy at the situation you find yourself in. I, as I said earlier, I take no pleasure in resuming land for road, but this is a very important project and one we will consider more fully later this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, councillors Free, Rang and Oven.
Yeah, I'd like to move suspension of so much of standing orders as is necessary to move an urgency motion regarding the Priestdale Road to Underwood Road project.
Seconded.
Councillors, Free, Rang and Oven, you have up to three minutes to establish why you weren't able to move this onto the notice paper earlier.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I've just heard the comments from Mrs White, and I'm very concerned to hear about the process that's gone on so far regarding this proposed resumption. I don't see a need to proceed with this matter today, and I would like to see the decision made in terms of item D on the Establishment and Coordination Committee report delayed to a later date. So I think there's a very strong case for taking a bit more time here. I think the resident has rightly requested a bit more information, and I think there's certainly some serious questions about whether the property or the portion of the property is actually needed. Personally, I'm strongly opposed to the widening of Priestdale Road, I don't think it needs to be widened, and I don't think this eight-metre stretch of land is necessary to complete the project as described. So I'd, yeah, like to suggest and move that we delay decision on item D today and that we require the City Projects team to go back and consult further with Ms White and other affected residents before any decisions are made about the resumption. And to the question of urgency, I've only become aware of this issue upon reading the papers that were submitted over the last 24 hours or so, and I think, having heard Ms White today, I would like more time and I would like the council to consider this more deeply before making such a big decision that's going to have a fundamental impact on this family and their property.
The motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules to allow councillor Free, Rang and Oven to move a motion, all in favour of the suspension of standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division being called by councillor Free, Rang and Oven and councillor Cook. Ayes to the right, noes to the left, please. Thank you, claps. Please close the bars. Results, please.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
Thank you. That motion is not carried. Councillors, please resume your seats as quickly as possible.
Point of order, Chair.
Question.
Sorry, just one more. It's not a big deal, but I just wanted to draw your attention to a matter of good order in the chamber. As councillors were moving back and forth here, I'm not going to name the councillor, but one of them muttered the term disgraceful as we were walking past, and I assume the implication was that the move in that urgency motion was a disgraceful thing to do, and I take on it.
Point of order. Point of order to you.
Point of order, that was me, and I was talking to councillor Wines about the Super Bowl yesterday.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
Can we move on, please? Question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, with 2023 now well underway, can you outline to the chamber some of the priorities for the Shrinna Council that will be focused on delivering for the people of Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hammond, and I know that you are passionate about the future of this city, as is every person on this side of the chamber. 2023 is the year of building. It is the year that council has funded more capital works, building, more building of capital works than any year in the city's history. Over a billion dollars' worth of work funded to be spread right across the city. And in fact, 80% of all council's budget goes to the suburbs, and in fact, it is 86% to be precise. And so we are in the year of building a better Brisbane, and whether that includes some of the major projects that people have heard about or the raft of suburban improvements that are going on. We are building a better Victoria Park with the new master plan being finalised in that process, a new pump track at Victoria Park and park embellishments, the supporting and investment in events in Victoria Park to activate Brisbane's biggest new park in 50 years. Whether it's the Brisbane Metro, we're tunneling underway now, proceeding very soon past this building, under the surface, whether it's the construction of the Metro Depot out of Rochdale, which is well underway, or whether it's the continued testing of the Metro vehicle, Brisbane Metro powers or charges full steam ahead. The Greenbridge Bridge projects are underway at Breakfast Creek and Kangaroo Point. The Moghl Road corridor upgrade is underway in the western suburbs in that most dangerous and congested of western suburbs roads, and the work is going on in a whole range of suburban upgrades and road improvements. Whether it's Ritchie Road upgrade in Polara, investing in one of the fastest growing parts of Brisbane, or whether it's the Gardiner Road extension, investing in another fastest growing part of Brisbane, we are investing in building a better Brisbane and more infrastructure for a growing city. And whether it's the $22 million investment in the Archerfield Wetland Programme, a wonderful park upgrade which will see a former sewerage treatment plant converted into an amazing parkland for the people of Brisbane and particularly the people of the south side, or whether it's the Bradbury Park upgrade, which is going to be a truly spectacular, one-of-a-kind playground that I think people will come, not only from all around Brisbane to see, but even further afield than that as well. Whether it's the Murray Recreation Reserve International Cycle and Speed Skating Track, the new Evidon Park the new Evident Park Library where we turned the sod just the other day, councillor Davis, the Zilmia Library Upgrade, the Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Initiative, which will see at least 50 playgrounds upgraded with shape just this year alone. Or whether it's our plans to create more homes for people, the Bridgman Downs Neighbourhood Plan, which will create approximately 4,000 new homes, our suburban renewal and precinct planning initiatives, which will create thousands of new homes across the city and opportunity for more. Whether it's our Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme, which will, which is now open and will support the great organisations doing amazing things, not only to provide an immediate response to homelessness, but to help people get out of that situation and get their life back on track, get their life back to normal and have a secure roof over their head. We'll soon be releasing our new housing strategy, and I know councillor Allen is very excited about that, and there will be opportunities to provide more supply of housing in Brisbane to help with the affordability challenges, to help with the housing shortage. We are focused on building a better Brisbane, and whether it's roads, public transport, whether it's parks and playgrounds, whether there is new homes for people, this is a year of building, and this is a year I'm incredibly excited about.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today is Valentine's Day, so I wanted to ask you about a relationship of yours that has clearly gone sour. Former LMP councillor Kate Richards has launched legal action against members of the LMP and you personally. Court documents allege some very disturbing things occurred before she was cut by your party, and about the way city planning decisions are made in Brisbane. One of the allegations reads.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Owen.
Mr Chair, I refer to the locals' laws for the meeting, and in respect of questions that are meant to be asked without statement, argument, or placing a position, could you please rule on the question?
Thank you. Councillor Cook, assuming you're going to round up to a question very shortly.
Thank you, Mr Chair. One of the allegations reads like extortion to the tune of $200,000 in campaign funds being withheld from the LMP. Lord Mayor, were you a willing participant in the removal of Kate Richards as an LMP councillor, or were you forced into it via threats as suggested in media reports?
Lord Mayor.
I can simply say, I don't comment on fairy tales, and this is exactly what we see here. If councillor Cook is genuinely interested, she would have read the rest of the article where the LMP's response was made clear. That response is my position, and I won't be adding any further to that.
Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, one of the Shrinna Council's signature projects, the Brisbane Metro, has made significant progress over the break, with plenty more to come this year. Could you please update councillors on the latest in this turn-up-and-go public transport project?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you to councillor Huang for the question, because I know councillor Huang has a keen interest in the metro project with the construction of the depot well underway now in his ward at Rochedale. That depot will be Australia's biggest electric bus depot once finished, Mr Chair, but it's only one of 10 construction sites that we now have open across the city. The Adelaide Street Tunnel is another key piece of infrastructure in our metro project which will transform our city's bus network and help reduce congestion in the public transport system. Councillors will note that the tunnel will be passing right below our feet in the coming month, which is slightly nerve-wracking, but mostly exciting. The tunnel has two work sites at the portal along North Key, and another at the northern end of the tunnel in King George Square Station, where the tunnel will ultimately connect in with the existing busway. Late last year, we reached a very big milestone with the completion of preparatory works on the tunnel portal. Now, Mr Chair, tunneling is a very superstitious business, which is why we had both a smoking ceremony and a priest to give a blessing, give us good luck for the work ahead. St Barbara is the patron saint of tunneling, so there's a statue of her on-site for good luck. And so far, I'm glad to see that has worked, and the tunneling is progressing extremely well. And I was very pleased to be able to give a first look at the progress to the media this morning, and they were very impressed with just how much progress has already been made since late last year. The tunnel is being excavated in three phases using a purpose-built canopy drill rig. We've already mined as far as 20 metres along in some sections. The tunneling team are tunneling 24 hours a day, seven days a week, meaning that we're able to cram two and a half years' worth of tunneling in just one year. And that's only possible, Chair, because we've opted for a mined tunneling methodology rather than a cut-and-cover solution to minimise the impact that works would have on surrounding residents and businesses, as well as the wider transport network. We know, Chair, that this was the right decision because we've seen how cut-and-cover tunnels have disturbed other cities like Auckland and Sydney. This tunnel, though, is only seven metres below the surface at its deepest, Mr Chair, and there is a complex network of utilities, heritage buildings, and other basements that we will pass by closely underground. Just this morning, Chair, we were about five metres from the bottom bar at the Criterion Hotel, to give you an example of just how close we will be to some of the city's most important cultural institutions. In fact, our tunnel is the first time in Australia that a soft-ground tunnel with low cover will be constructed in a highly built-up urban environment. More than 3,000, 39,500 cubic metres of material will be removed during the construction of this tunnel, which could fill nearly 16 Olympic-sized swimming pools. Once complete, the tunnel will be over 200 metres long, providing a dedicated connection between the south-east busway to the inner northern busway, bypassing the congested Queen Street Bus Tunnel. Approximately one-third of the city's bus services will be taken off our CBD streets with delivering major travel-time savouries for commuters, both on and off buses. Metros and some of our bus services will now be removed from the surface of Adelaide Street and redirected through the tunnel at North Key. And what's happening, there's a lot happening, Chair, underneath Adelaide Street, but this week we will start work on the surface of Adelaide Street. So people will start to see the upgrade of the walkability of Adelaide Street with the Adelaide Street Transformation Project, where we will declutter the streetscape and improve the usability of the city's bus stops. It's a very important street for our city, and at the moment, it's very difficult to navigate. It is cluttered with street furniture, and it can be hard for visitors to our city to find the right bus stop. And so, Chair, that is all about to change. We will be creating wider footpaths, we'll be building new pedestrian build-outs and crossing points, we'll be building new street furniture and enhancing the landscaping and stalling more public art, and we will reduce the streetscape clutter by over 80%. The works will be completed overnight to minimise impacts, but there will be some changes to bus stops during works, particularly if you catch a bus on Adelaide Street in the evening. So from Sunday to Thursday nights, residents catching a bus from Adelaide Street should make sure to check the TransLink website for updates to their bus stop location. Both the surface works and tunneling will continue for the rest of the year, Mr Chair, before we link the new tunnel in with the existing busway at King George Square Station. There's a lot of work to do before metro surfaces commence next year, Chair, but we are well and truly on the way to delivering the most complex project this council has ever undertaken, a $1.7 billion transformation of our city's public transport network, the network that moves two-thirds of our commuters.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, while you're on your North American holiday, I'm sure you caught up with councillor Fiona Hammond's interesting interview on 4VC, where she referred to a genuine local community campaign, including a petition signed by over 900 people to save the Stafford Bowls Club as, and I quote, 'porkies and mistruths'. This is the usual LMP response, of course, when anyone in Brisbane dares to challenge your decisions.
To your question, councillor Cassidy.
Lord Mayor, will you apologise to Stafford locals, and how will councillor Hammond be reprimanded?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question. Councillor Hammond is a local champion, and it's why she keeps getting elected year in, year out by what would normally be a Labor ward. And she is a champion that wants to see what is a derelict, overgrown, disused site reactivated for the community. We know, we know that Labor has a history of fake campaigns when it comes to bowls clubs, and this is a corker. This is a corker. Now, we know that there is a whole lot of mistruths going around about this particular one, but let me tell you the facts. Let's have a change, let's have some facts. So this particular lease was originally awarded to the Crushers Leagues Club. That lease went through a competitive process. Crushers was suggested as the winning tender or bidder, and they had a proposal to make a significant investment into this site. Their proposal included a significant multimillion-dollar investment, and this proposal came through to the chamber. What has changed since then? What has changed since then? Well, first of all, at the time when the Crushers Leagues Club lease came through, this is what the leader of the opposition said, this is what the Labor Party said. "I believe", and I'm quoting here, "I believe the crushers club may be obliged to take on a fair bit of debt to pay for the upgrade, but any arrangement which helps junior sport and bowls is one that we'll support."
That's right.
Did that club have poker machines?
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
I didn't mention Crushers Leagues Club.
Oh, yes, you can bet you didn't.
Go on, your point of order.
Bit of order. This question is relating to something that's going on in 2023, not 2019. My question, Chair, was specifically, will the Lord Mayor apologise to Stafford locals, and how will councillor Hammond be reprimanded?
I believe the Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
Thank you. Look, there's no intention to apologise for seeing a community facility upgraded and invested in. It's a fantastic outcome for the community. Now, when the Crushers Leagues Club proposal came through, Labor voted for it. The leader of the opposition spoke in favour of it. They acknowledged, and they understood, that poker machines were part of that deal. Now, what's happened since then? Unfortunately, Crushers has not been able to progress their proposal, but they have identified someone who can. Because what's being put on the table here is not, is not some kind of licence-to-print money, like has been dishonestly suggested. What we see here is an obligation to invest millions of dollars into upgrading a community facility, and over and above that, to give an ongoing contribution of hundreds of thousands of dollars back into community sport. That's what's on the table here. And so what we see is a transfer to another organisation who can not only do what Crushers Leagues Club offered, but they can offer another 2.6, 2.8 million into the upgrade. So a better deal than what Labor voted yes for is now being progressed. This is how dishonest the campaign is. This is how dishonest these people are in suggesting that this is a bad deal. That is dishonest.
Point, councillor Johnson, please. Point of order for you.
Thank you. The meeting's local laws say that no councillor should be referring to members of the public in derogatory ways, which the Lord Mayor is clearly doing. This is just not appropriate to be attacking people like this who've signed a petition, and I would ask you to.
Excuse me, excuse me, councillors. Councillor Johnson, Deputy Mayor, please.
I'm sorry, is that appropriate?
Councillor, please, no interjecting across the floor. Councillor Johnson, have you finished your point of order? Because I'll take, I'll make a ruling.
I would just ask you to draw the Lord Mayor back into appropriate references to members of the public.
There was no specific mention of anyone in particular, it was a reference to our campaign.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I certainly wasn't referring to a member of the public, I was referring to the dishonest Labor campaign. Now, now, you would think, based on the material going around and the commentary, that Labor councillors were against poker machines. You would think that that, because that's what they want people to believe, but their record shows you something different. Now, we know that Lord Mayor Jim Sawley is the hero for councillor Cassidy and his team, the mentor, the person they celebrate more than anyone.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
He knows what's coming here, he knows what's coming.
Lord Mayor, please.
I'm, I'm very happy to talk about Jim Sawley's legacy in Brisbane, but, but Chair, on relevance, Jim Sawley was last Lord Mayor in 2003. This question is about the Stafford Bowls Club and the deal that was done in 2022, and the petition that is closed in 2023. Can you bring the Lord Mayor back to this question?
Thank you.
About treating the people of Stafford with respect, not contempt like their local councillor does.
Councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, I'll bring you back to the question, as opposed, please.
Well, it's very relevant, because it goes to the question of whether Labor supports poker machines or not. Now, I'm not going to refer to anything about paper bags in car parks.
The Lord Mayor doesn't get to ask the questions. He is required, he is required to answer these questions. You, you cannot chair a meeting, you are not chairing this meeting appropriately.
What is your point of order, councillor Cassidy?
On relevance, the Lord Mayor doesn't get to ask us questions, he is required during question time to answer our questions. You need to start chairing this meeting, councillor.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
The Lord Mayor is being, sorry, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Could I clarify, is councillor Cassidy now stating that Jim Sawley is no longer relevant?
That's not a relevant point of order, councillor Owen. Lord Mayor, please.
Well, we all know that poker machines are a big part of the discussion that's going on. They don't want to talk about this because they know what's coming. The most famous lease deal ever in the history of Brisbane City Council, Kedron Wavell Services Club, awarded by Jim Sawley for not 20 years, not 30 years, but 70 years. 70 years with 300 poker machines. That is Labor's record, Mr Chair, 300 poker machines with a 70-year lease. The lease-end date is 2064. That is Labor's record. So anytime anyone wants to hear anything from this crew, remember that. They love poker machines and they love 70-year leases.
Your time has expired, further questions?
Chair, point of order.
Though I'm up to further questions.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
I moved so much of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
You have a motion to suspend standing rules, to move a motion?
Yes.
What is your reason for moving your motion for suspension of standing rules?
Well, thanks very much, Chair. I think this is an issue that we need to deal with now, today. This is quite urgent, and I will tell you why this couldn't have been put on the notice paper yesterday, because closer business yesterday, a petition which was signed by 900 locals calling on council to reopen the tender process for the Stafford Bowls Club closed, and that will be presented hopefully today, if not today, next week. We've just asked the Lord Mayor to apologise to those Stafford locals on behalf of their local councillor, councillor Hammond, because she clearly won't do it for saying a genuine community campaign. Her constituents have come to her and said, "We want you to represent us", and she said, "What you're saying are all mistruths and porkies", and that is completely disrespectful to those people. They have been very clear, what they want to see is the Stafford Bowls Club as a genuine community space for the community. They want to see council invest in that, rather than a backroom deal done to give Brisbane Racing Club a licence-to-print money, because that's exactly what they will do. They're not doing this out of the goodness of their own heart. So if councillor Hammond won't apologise of her own volition, this council should require her to do so. So my motion would be that the Lord Mayor apologise to Stafford residents on behalf of LMP councillor Fiona Hammond for her insulting claims in the media, where she labelled community campaigns as porkies and mistruths, and that the Lord Mayor and the LMP council place on hold the current lease agreement for Stafford Bowls Club and open submissions for community organisations and sporting groups to submit alternative proposals with a reasonable timeframe to develop a more acceptable solution.
Excuse me, councillor Cassidy, is there a point of order?
It was about why this is urgent, not about what the debate was.
Yeah. Thank you. I think you're making a point that you want to suspend standing rules to allow the motion, as you've been reading out, to be debated.
Yeah, the people of Stafford demand a better solution than the one that this LMP administration is giving them.
Point of order on why it couldn't have been before 1 o'clock yesterday?
I think, I think we heard the answer to that. The motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour of the motion for suspension of standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thank you, Billy. Please close the bars. Plaques, resolve.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
That motion is lost. Please, councillors, resume your seats. Further questions? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, last year, the chamber unanimously supported heritage protection for homes in Maruka. But in classic Labor Party fashion, they have done a total 180 and now oppose these protections. Councillor Allen, how do you spell hypocrisy?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for the question. Well, Mr. Chair, I've lost track of the number of times I've stood in this very chamber and called out Labor's hypocrisy and mistruths, especially when it comes to the Nathan Salisbury-Maruka Draft Neighbourhood Plan and the associated heritage and character protections.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
The question was, how do you spell hypocrisy? And councillor Allen is not answering the question. And he should really be spelling the word hypocrisy, because if it's been written that badly by the LNP staff members, you should hold him to account. He's not allowed to debate the question.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
He is required to answer the question.
Thank you, I believe councillor Allen is being relevant to the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My spelling of hypocrisy will be A L P, and this is why. So when it comes to Labor, they never let a story, you know, they'll push a story without any consideration for the facts. We see this constantly, and this is just another fantastic example. Councillor Hammond is correct. This council, both sides of the chamber unanimously supported the temporary local planning instrument to protect 180 homes within the Maruka War Workers Estate in August last year. Councillor Griffiths, during the debate, agreed with this side of the chamber on the temporary protection measures, and I quote, "Labor will be, of course, supporting the protection of these important properties, and it's nice to actually have some agreement with all of council in relation to these particular properties." He even applauded the chamber for protecting and preserving character housing across our city. To reinforce his stance on the protection of character homes in the area, it was during the same meeting that councillor Griffiths moved a motion to extend such protections to all the draft neighbourhood plan area. He quoted residents moving to the area because of the character. He quoted the residents loved the streets and they loved the character homes. He referenced residents' submissions on wanting council to commit to protecting pre-existing 1947 houses. But, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure what has happened over the past six months since the TLPI was adopted in August. But what I do know is councillor Griffiths seems to have changed his tune on this matter. This is a temporary protection measure that was once reasonable to the councillor, but now because he has been contacted by residents, has a different perspective. Council's City Architecture and Heritage Team, as part of the neighbourhood planning process, review existing local heritage places and identify any potential new heritage places. It is a process that includes consultation and support from council's independent Heritage Advisory Council. Councillor Griffiths has said that character zoning allowed internal as well as reasonable outside renovations, as long as facades were not changed too much. He said essentially what was already in place, the character overlay, was good enough to protect these homes, his words, not mine. So if we were to do what councillor Griffiths wants us to do and overturn a TLPI that was unanimously voted for, we would see poor design outcomes on these heritage homes. And I eagerly await councillor Griffiths's submission on the TLPI and these particular war workers' homes. Now, he further suggested that this is just a distraction from a separate and controversial decision to remove character protection from 200 nearby houses as part of the new neighbourhood plan. Mr. Chair, let me be clear on this one. Councillor Griffiths is constantly getting this wrong. I certainly don't recall the draft strategy or draft neighbourhood plan stating we were going to remove protections over 200 homes, as councillor Griffiths has repeatedly and incorrectly said. Councillor Griffiths's comments failed to acknowledge the overall net increase of 32 pre-1947 properties in the traditional building character overlay. Mr. Chair, I do acknowledge that the draft plan does propose the removal of some properties from the traditional building character overlay. But these are properties that don't even have a character home on them or properties that are fractured in the context of the street scape. They might be a single isolated home between two apartment blocks, or in fact, they might have a community facility on them. So a lot of these do not contain sites that are true character homes. So as I said in the beginning, I truly do await councillor Griffiths's submission on the war workers' heritage homes. He's clearly had a change of mind on this. So obviously, he's got some great academic thought to add to this particular exercise. So I'm sure it'll make good reading. I just think councillor Griffiths needs to get his facts right. He needs to get his head unmuddled, and I'll leave it.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Sri Ranganathan?
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor. Lord Mayor, up in the public gallery today, there's a gentleman named Alan, who, among other things, he's a war veteran, he's got significantly impaired mobility. Recently, he went to catch a bus, and he doesn't live anywhere near somewhere where you can buy a go卡 or buy, there's no ticket machines near his home. He'd misplaced his go卡. And when he went to catch the bus, he was told by the bus driver, "We don't accept cash anymore, so I can't let you on. You won't be able to ride the bus today." And so after, with significant impaired mobility, after walking all the way to the bus stop, he was denied access to that essential public service and then had to walk a great deal further, which I think is a pretty significant social justice issue. So my question to you, Lord Mayor, is what is your message to Alan today? And what steps will you take to ensure that people who don't have a go卡 or a credit card can still access that basic service of public transport?
Thank you, councillor Sri Ranganathan, for that question. It was a good question, and I commend you on the first good question that we've seen from your side of the chamber so far. Look, what happened to Alan was unacceptable, and it's unacceptable for a number of reasons. First of all, we see the injustice of a war veteran being denied access to public transport when day in, day out, young people are jumping on the bus and not paying, and nothing happens. We see this time and time again, where young people are just refusing to pay because they are taking advantage of this no child left behind approach. And this is not consistent. And it is unfair for the people that actually do the right thing and are prepared to pay. I have talked to Minister Bailey about this issue myself and definitely agree that reform with the way the ticketing works is needed. And so this is something I'm happy to look at. Frankly, we have to look at opportunities to make sure that there is fairness when it comes to access to public transport. Now, my personal view is that cash is a dying thing, and, you know, it has been phased out in a lot of examples. It is phased out through...
Councillor Johnston, please.
Where have you been during the pandemic, councillor Johnston? Like, seriously, nobody uses cash anymore. And we see...
Point of order to you, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Just on relevance, my question to the mayor was, what is he doing to ensure that people who don't have go卡 or credit cards aren't denied access to public transport? That was the substance of the question. I would appreciate a direct answer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You're being relevant to the question.
As I was answering, I have had discussions with Minister Bailey about how we can make sure that these challenges with ticketing are addressed. Now, first of all, I think one of the most important things that can happen is the new ticketing system can be implemented. Now, sadly, as we see with a lot of examples with the state government, Brisbane gets something new last when it comes to the state government. We have seen the rolling out of new ticketing for public transport everywhere else in South East Queensland, virtually with the exception of Brisbane. And that is unfair, given that Brisbane represents the majority of trips being taken across the network. Now, I understand that they might want to test it in certain areas, but the system is working, and we're having a very, very slow rollout of the new ticketing system.
Point of order to you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the new ticketing system is also cashless. So I'm really asking the mayor, what's he going to do for people who don't have a go卡, who don't have a credit card, and don't live near somewhere where you can buy a ticket or a go卡?
No.
It's a straightforward question.
The question was relevant to the go卡, and the Lord Mayor is explaining his consultation with the state government.
Now, councillor Sri knows that ticketing policy is not set by Brisbane City Council. It is set by Translink and the state government, which is why I've continually repeated that I have raised these matters with the minister, because they are important matters. They are genuinely important matters. Now, as cash is phased out, and it continues to be phased out in a lot of different examples, that is the future. You know, this is something that's been accelerated by the pandemic. You go into a lot of shops now, and they will tell you that they don't, they're not accepting cash or not encouraging cash. Our parking meters were the first cashless parking meters in Australia, and now progressively, all councils are rolling out the same approach.
Councillor Johnston?
And I would also point out that there's another issue here, which is an industrial relations one with the RTBU, where the RTBU has said that they don't want to handle cash. They don't, that is their official policy, they do not want to handle cash. So what we see here is a complicated situation, but we need some answers. We need some resolutions from the minister and Translink, and we will continue to advocate...
Point of order, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Couldn't they have just let the guy on the bus for free? Like, why didn't the drivers do that?
Lord Mayor.
So as I was saying before, there's a lot of people who ride public transport for free at the moment. And there's a fairness issue here. Look, if I was the driver, Alan would have been in the front seat before you know it, and he would have been riding the transport. But obviously, you know, I can't comment on the situation because I wasn't there, but I would simply say, if there's a situation like that, you know, some flexibility is good. Some flexibility is something that we would support as a council, particularly given that a massive number of young people are riding for free at the moment, even though they are legally required to pay. So there needs to be a better ticketing arrangement in place. We have to accept that cash is on the way out, but there are other ways to do things, and...
Please stop interjecting, councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Johnston, please stop interjecting.
The pandemic apparently didn't happen, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Johnston, Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
And so we will continue advocating for ticketing policy reform. Thank you, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Further questions? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's lovely to be back in the chamber for the first meeting of the new year. My question today is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, Brisbane is growing at a rapid pace, and with more and more people moving here, it means that there are more people on our roads. Can you please update the chamber on how the Shrinna Council is investing in our growth suburbs to help our residents get home sooner and safer?
Thank you. Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I can I thank councillor Owen for the question and note her keen personal interest in ensuring that adequate infrastructure is built and presented for the people of the growth suburbs, particularly in the outer south. Can I also make the important point that while February 14 is for lovers, nobody loves the suburbs more than Lord Mayor, Shrinna and his team? And can I say, that is evidenced by so many projects being delivered for the growth suburbs in the outer south in particular. Can I begin by discussing and making reference to the Rochdale-Priestale Road intersection, which had its lights turned on only some weeks ago, discussed in committee this morning? That area, the Rochdale area, has seen a population growth from 3,175 in 2016 to 7,633, a growth of 140% in a seven-year period. This means we need to continue to improve infrastructure in that area. Now, consider that that 140% compares to a 9.9% across the whole city. And if I can make mention, my own Ward of Inogra grows at about the same rate as the city. So it is a mature community compared to some of our outer suburban ones, which do grow very quickly. I see councillor Landers in my eyeline. There can't be a moment go by when we talk about road projects in the outer suburbs without mentioning Bracken Ridge Ward, Beams Road. The tender has closed. We continue to work on the growth areas of Fitzgibbon, and I suppose Zillmere is mature, but there is still growth in that Fitzgibbon-Castledine area. I can provide further information to this council that Beams Road... There are other projects, councillor Murphy, but there's always room for Bracken Ridge. There's always room for Bracken Ridge. There's another suburb I'll talk about in a moment, which you may have heard of before, called Polara, but I'm coming to that. But can I assure this council that Beams Road, the tenders have closed, and we have received a number of tenders, which is excellent, to ensure that that project progresses? We remain keenly committed to that Beams Road project. Now, back to Rochdale-Priestale. That former roundabout was carrying roughly 20,000 vehicles per day with significant congestion on all approaches. Can I recognise and thank the contributions of the federal government and note that Minister Treasurer Chalmers and the Member for Bonner, Mr. Ross Vasta, both attended the light turning on? We could not have done that project without federal support. Can I also thank Logan City Council for their cooperation and contribution to that particular project, noting that at the intersection, three of the four corners belong to Brisbane City, but the populated growth corner actually does belong to Logan. So thank you for their cooperation and their financial support for that. Now, while that intersection was congested, the Rochdale-Priestale intersection was congested, there were four crashes requiring medical treatment. And that does not record ones that near misses or collisions that did not require hospitalisation. The upgrades there have created a four-lane dedicated pedestrian crossing, excuse me, a four-way dedicated pedestrian crossing for those walking and riding through that, with marked improvements for the pedestrian ways through there. And there'll also be, I trust a lot of support in this chamber for the recently upgraded Newham and Wecker intersection of Mount Gravat, which I can say that particular project was concluded recently with the pedestrian bridge in January of this year, but the roadworks were concluded late last year. That particular intersection had 18 reported crashes in the period 2014 through 2019, and with 13 of those being related to motorists being unable to make a safe turn from Newham into Wecker due to the high volumes. Now, we focus very much on having a safe and efficient road network, which gets residents home sooner and safer. The final project which I'll speak to relates directly to councillor Owen, the questioner from earlier, and it's one that I know that she is very enthusiastic about, and that's, of course, Ritchie Road Corridor Upgrade, which includes a number of projects across a number of years. But the Ritchie Road Corridor project is positioned next to the rapidly growing Polara State School, and council, I think unreasonably, has been left to carry a burden that should be shared with the state as well. But unsurprisingly to this council, we always mop up for the state when they let the community down. And this is one more example of that. The Ritchie Road Corridor has been split into three stages. And stage one has been delivered in two parts, with the construction of dedicated shoulders and right turns at Polara State School with a safe crossing point for Ritchie Road for the many hundreds of schoolchildren there. But also, I'm running out of time, but we have done...
Councillor Wines, in fact, your time has expired, and that ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the summer recess 2022/2023 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the summer recess 2022/2023 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted. Lord Mayor, is there any debate?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in red and blue to support Sweetheart Day. Sweetheart Day coincides with Valentine's Day, obviously, and it focuses on supporting all people impacted by childhood heart diseases, which is one of the largest causes of infant death in Australia. So that is lighting up red and blue Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place. Now, tomorrow is the 81st anniversary of the fall of Singapore, and Radcliffe Place and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red to... Bridge will be lit up in red to mark this occasion. There were thousands of Australian soldiers who lost their lives in the battle for Alaya in Singapore, and obviously, it was seen as one of the pivotal points in the Second World War, the fall of Singapore, and the impact that that had. Many prisoners of war were killed or died in captivity under horrible and horrific circumstances as a result of their capture in the fall of Singapore. Tomorrow night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support International Childhood Cancer Day, the day that is observed on the 15th of February every year and honours all the children and families experiencing the effects of this horror disease. This Sunday, the 19th of February, marks the tragedy of two years since Hannah Clarke and her children, Alaya, Leana and Trey, were brutally murdered in a horrible case of domestic violence. Hannah and the kids loved handstands, and you may have seen some councillors doing some handstands recently and question why that is. Well, this is in aid of supporting awareness about the work of Small Steps for Hannah, and it's part of an awareness campaign. And thank you to those councillors who have defied gravity to participate in that challenge. Councillor Adams would volunteer, but she's done enough in recent times. Look, I just wanted to, before I move on to the items in front of us, go back to this issue of the Stafford Bowls Club, because we do see a lot of dishonesty circulating around, a lot of misinformation circulating around. And I know that Labour specialises in fake campaigns when it comes to bowls clubs. It's, it's a save the bolo campaign. When the bolo shut down long ago, we've seen that happen before. But the reality is, what we want to see here is a better outcome for the community. It's as simple as that. Now, we went through a process which Labour supported in 2019 to agree and approve the best offer that was put forward from the community, and that was the offer by Crushes Leeds Club in 2019, when that new proposal was awarded back then.
It was a tender process then?
It was a tender process back then, as we've heard from councillor Cassidy. Now, what, what does a tender process do? It flushes out and identifies the best offer.
Three years ago.
The best offer. And so what was the best offer in 2019? Today, we have an even better offer. Today, we have an additional investment of $2.8 million. So let's be very clear what's happened. We got the best offer in 2019, and now we have an additional offer that is better than that. So it came through a competitive process to get the best possible offer in 2019, and that offer has been exceeded. It was okay to award the offer in 2019, and Labour voted for it, yet somehow an even better offer is something they claim to oppose.
That would be no exception.
So this is really an attempt to misrepresent the truth. It is an attempt to suggest that they are somehow against poker machines, when we've seen year in, year out, them supporting leases with poker machines in them. We have seen countless, across the city, clubs and organisations being awarded poker machine licences by the state government, and the last time I checked, it's been a Labour state government for the majority of the last 30 years that awards these licences, yet they want somehow residents to believe that they are suddenly against poker machines.
They're not.
It's dishonest. It is a dishonest campaign. What we'd like to see is a community facility returned back to the community, and what we'd like to see is an investment in that facility that doesn't burden the ratepayers of Brisbane, and what we'd like to see is $200,000 a year going back into community sport, and under this lease, that's exactly what we will see. Now, I've talked to a number of people who are genuinely excited to see Stafford Bowls Club revitalised and reopened to the community. At the moment, you know, it's, it's a community facility which needs investment, and the really, what it comes down to is, is that investment going to be made through rates, or is that investment able to be made by other operators? And so what we have here is a sporting organisation which is prepared to put in millions of dollars into upgrading the facility and then continue to give back to the community each year without burdening the ratepayers of Brisbane. And so this is a good deal for the community, it is a good deal for ratepayers, and I'm not going to get into arguments about poker machines. We all have our own views on poker machines, but I would simply say, council doesn't regulate poker machines. We don't have any role in regulating poker machines. That is done by the Labour state government. So if people do have concerns about poker machines, or in fact about racing, then they should raise it with the Labour state government. Both of those things are regulated by the state government. And so this is really a good outcome for the community, and it's really disappointing to see such dishonest campaign being run, well, it's quite clearly for political purposes. I'd really like to know who has funded the flyers, who has funded the website, who has funded billboard advertising? It's quite clear, it's quite clear, it's quite clear that it has Politics 101 written all over it, and it is quite clear that locals are being misled by the Labour Party. And so that is disappointing, but it is unfortunately not surprising, because we've seen it happen time in and time out. When websites, when websites appear with photos of councillor Cassidy on them, who do you think paid for those websites? So...
That's because their local councillor refused to go.
Their local councillor, councillor Fiona Hammond, is a champion for her community, and she wants the best for her community.
Councillors, please.
Councillor Cassidy just wants to play petty party politics, and that is a shame. Now, moving to the items in front of us, items A, B and C are the contracts and tendering reports for October, November and December 2022. In these reports, 81 out of 88 contracts are being awarded to local suppliers, being 92% of contracts, and obviously exceeding our 80% target. 80% target being the number of contracts being awarded to local businesses and suppliers. In the financial year to date, 88% of contracts have been awarded to local suppliers, and so we're approximately halfway through the financial year, and certainly at, at the December point, we are halfway. And in that time, 88% of contracts were awarded to local suppliers with a total of $777 million going into local business in our local area. Included in these contracts are the construction of the Dockside and Mowbray Park ferry terminals, the construction of the new Brisbane International Cycle Park, the Shored Cliff escarpment works, there's a number of service relocations to facilitate road and infrastructure upgrades, and also the first round of our Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Programme. We have in front of us those three items. Moving on to item D, the Gardiner Road Extension Project. Obviously, I heard the speaker earlier, and I'm heartened that councillor Wines will follow up on that correspondence. This is a project, though, that has a time imperative. The Gardiner Road Extension needs to happen as soon as possible. It is a project that is impacted by surrounding works, including the construction of the Metro Depot. It is a project that is impacted by surrounding work, such as the, the South East Busway Extension down through to Springwood, which the state government is progressing. And what we see here is that the construction of the South East Busway Extension, together with the nearby adjacent Metro Depot works, will require the closure of School Road or a section of School Road. Now, that School Road connection is obviously an important connection in a growing area, and we need to replace that connection with the Gardiner Road Extension. And so there is a time imperative here, which is why we're progressing with the notice of intention to resume in the project. But obviously, when it comes to the specific detail...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Extension of time for the Lord Mayor has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
When it comes to the specific details of individual properties, obviously, this is a process that is subject to discussion and negotiation with, with property owners. Now, obviously, this is a process which has a formal objection period, but there are also legal rights that owners have if they don't believe that the process has been a right process or a fair process. Now, obviously, we will do our best to make sure that it is a fair process. But in this case, what it appears is that council is planning for ultimate upgrades that need to occur in the future, whether that is the creation of a wider road or a new bike way, and I know there's already been sections of bike way built on either side of this property. We need to accommodate for the future. And so this process will obviously continue to be pursued by councillor Wines, but we do need to progress with the construction of the Gardiner Road Extension. As I said, this project does have a time imperative. Councillor Huang has made it very, very clear that he supports local residents when it comes to their need for a new road connection to replace School Road. He has advocated very strongly for that. But obviously, we all want to see, and councillor Huang and councillor Wines wants to see, a fair and right process, and that's what I want to happen in this case. So that's item D. Item F is the minor administrative amendments to the Brisbane City Plan, package M. Council's planning scheme is constantly changing so that it can remain in line with community and industry expectations and the need to provide more housing as our city grows. In December, the state government made changes to the planning regulation as it relates to rooming accommodation. According to the state, the amendment is intended to streamline approvals for rooming accommodation to provide greater housing diversity in the low-density residential zone, low-medium density residential zone as well. Council is required to adopt this policy change into its planning scheme without variation. Some of the variations include changes to small-scale rooming accommodation in dwelling houses in the low-density residential zone to provide statewide consistency, allowing, allowing small-scale rooming accommodation without requiring planning approval, such as a material change of use in lower-density residential zones where certain requirements can be met, and enabling council to require a planning approval for dwelling house developments in the high-density residential zone and medium-density residential zone. In addition, some zoning and overlay changes are being made to reflect current development approvals. Now, in commenting on this, and I've made it very clear that we are required and effectively being forced to implement this, I do, and I know a number of councillors do, have some concerns about the impacts that this may deliver. In fact, as the deputy mayor says, major concerns. Why is that? Because we have, as a council, previously led the way in trying to regulate rooming accommodation, to manage its impacts in local communities. And so we moved to introduce our own local requirements into the city plan, which were working well. They were working well, and...
Councillor Johnston, please, stop interjecting.
Councillor Johnston doesn't think anything's working well anywhere. And, and look, we know, that's very predictable, but the reality is, they were working well. Now, the state government stepped in to have a statewide approach, which totally wipes out the local requirements that we had and replaces them with more generic requirements. But what it will mean is that in local residential neighbourhoods, people were having more rooming accommodation popping up. That's what it will mean. It will mean that the impacts of rooming accommodation won't be as effectively managed as what we've seen in recent times. And councillor Adams points out that it's a change, there's a change to the number of people that are unrelated in one particular dwelling. And what's that change, councillor Adams?
More than ever.
Yeah, so we've limited it in the past to five. Five unrelated people in one dwelling. They will now be able to have more than five unrelated people in one dwelling. So you can actually really imagine some of the impacts that this change will have. That's what happens when the state government steps in with a one-size-fits-all approach to planning, which hasn't been thought out in terms of local impacts. So, look, you know, it's one of those things, we have been forced to do this. We don't necessarily believe it's the best outcome, but I think that what we will see down the track is concerns being raised by the community, and hopefully, at that point in time, the state government will change their mind about the way this is implemented. So, Mr. Chair, that is item F.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I was to speak on all of these items before us today, and just ask that item, the right clause, clause D be taken seriatum for voting, please.
Clause D, seriatum for debate, can voting or just voting?
Just voting, yeah, voting, yep. So starting together on the, the first three items, A, B and C, which is the contracts and tendering for October, November and December. Now, this lazy LMP administration is not only contracting everything out, they're now too lazy to bother bringing these items to council in a timely manner for scrutiny. The, some of the contracts before us today were awarded five months ago. So councillors are now reviewing some of this expenditure, looking at this, this contracting out five months after the decision has already been made. And there's no reason those contracts couldn't have been brought to council last year, or last week or the week before, if the Lord Mayor wasn't off on his overseas junket playing the flying taxis, and the start of this council year wasn't delayed. And the first three items we see before us, A, B and C, is over $60 million worth of external contracts, and there is a very common thread throughout all of these, and that tells the story of this LMP administration. It's not the story the Lord Mayor would like to tell you, but it's that they're lazy out of touch and have forgotten the suburbs of Brisbane. And no amount of political spin will cover the reality. The first contract is for the extension of Road Surface Inventory Solution, an interesting title. You, you might be better off getting an entirely new system together, considering that the Lord Mayor and councillor Marks have repeatedly said that if people out in the suburbs want potholes filled, they need to report them, rather than council carrying out proactive maintenance. How lazy of the LMP to say, we're going to spend millions of dollars on a road maintenance solution, an IT solution, but still requiring residents to be the ayes on the street and report all of those failures to council before they can be, before they can be rectified. There's a contract for a consultancy to support flood impact assessment on the road network, a year, a year after the 2022 flood, we're seeing this come through. And after 20 years of rule in Brisbane, two major flood events now, several smaller flood events throughout that time. You think this LMP administration would have prioritised flood risk management and have a plan to prevent damage and deal with disaster as they happen, but no, of course, not under this LMP mayor. The confusion, poor planning and lack of basic services in the suburbs continue. There is a drainage project in my ward listed here, which I am of course happy to see completed finally. The item is repairing a concrete channel in Washington Street Deegan, and that is very, very long overdue. I saw the Lord Mayor gloated about it in his political flyer, that he said, his election flyer that he sent out just recently, saying that, that this, this drainage channel will be repaired. What he failed to mention in that flyer was that it's been awaiting repair for five years. It's been identified by council and collapsing for the last five years. I had a meeting on site with a resident and a former, now former council officer, whose, that, that resident's property was subsiding into the drain back in October 2018. That project had been identified prior to that meeting as well, but was getting very bad by that point. Five years later, we're finally seeing a contract to fix that drain. When the LMP mayor of this city, and he very much is the mayor of the city only, not the suburbs, when he says he cares about the suburbs, he is telling, what's his word? Mis-truths. He's telling mistruths. Because you can't listen to what he says, you must look at what he does. And not enough is being spent on the suburbs. We've got another $14 million being spent in contracting out basic cleaning services, so the cleaning of park facilities, suburban shopping areas and boat ramps, really basic, ongoing council work that is now being contracted out with no assurances of decent work practices and good wages. We, we, we see the reports and the, the audit committee and those things where they mention, they look into these things, and yet we see continually under this LMP administration, examples of where workers are being done over. The LMP have a shocking track record when it comes to ensuring contracted out jobs, aren't seeing workers ripped off. And there's a very recent example, but there's plenty of others. So what assurances as councillors do we have that these workers won't get ripped off, like HC? like HCL IT staff whose wages were stolen, or the staff at the Pig and Whistle, a council-owned facility in the mall, the ferry staff, of course. Under the LMP, no worker is safe. We've also got contracting out of carpentry services. These are for jobs that are big and small on council-owned buildings and facilities. So this is carpentry work that council requires doing on council-owned facilities. That would be carrying out planned maintenance each and every year and responding to emerging issues. Now, this is exactly the kind of work that council should be doing in-house, where they're supporting the training of apprentices and employing tradespeople. This contract's for $2.2 million. You can just imagine how many apprentices and ongoing staff you could employ with that ongoing money being used for contracting out of these basic services. And it is, of course, I think next week, or maybe starting this week, National Apprentice Week, and here we see an item before us today where this LMP administration is contracting out opportunities for apprentices to get a start here in Brisbane City Council, quite shameful of the LMP. There's a contract for bus driver amenities chemical upgrades. They always put funny names to try and throw you off the scent. They don't really describe exactly what this is for when it's described as bus driver amenities chemical upgrades. But two years ago, Labour councillors alongside the RTBU raised the issue of drivers being forced to use portable chemical toilets that weren't up to standard. They were dirty, they were broken, and in some cases, they were dangerous. The LMP laughed off this issue. I just heard councillor Murphy have a little giggle then. I remember how they laughed and laughed about bus drivers not having adequate toilet facilities back then, and the Lord Mayor even went so far as to make, you know, toilet jokes and deride people at the time. Well, two years later, two years has taken this LMP administration to finally do something. We're seeing a contract to supposedly upgrade these facilities. There's still not permanent toilet facilities for our drivers, but at least this is something, I suppose. But you have to ask yourself, why should it take two years? Why should it take workers to continually raise these problems? Why should it take political pressure and councillors bringing photos of these facilities into this chamber and tabling them for the LMP to finally say, all right, we will provide toilet facilities as a human right to our bus drivers? Just, you know, it's a basic human right, and it's a disgrace. I couldn't help but noticing, of course, the contract, we've had one of these before, a contract for project management for an external contract. So they're getting another external contractor in to project manage an external contract. This one's for the fit out of councils, CBD officers assume that's the Brisbane Square fit out just up the road. You would think that in an organisation of 9,000-odd people here in Brisbane City Council, that we would have one person on the books, a permanent employee that works for council, is carrying out council's duties, would be able to project manage. But I guess when you spend the last 20 years with a political policy of contracting out as much as you possibly can, we've got to the point now where there are multiple contracts, getting external contractors to come in and manage other external contracts. It is absolutely crazy, and it's no wonder when you look at all these that records, that rates are at record highs, but residents aren't seeing a good return on that money out in the suburbs. And I've saved the last two clangers for the end, Chair. The contract for publicly an undisclosed amount of money for a company to provide data sets to find short-term rental accommodation in Brisbane. Now, this is the culmination, of course, this contract of Adrian Schrinner's plan to ease the housing crisis in Brisbane. This was the one and only action he was taking, was to increase rates on short-term rental accommodation, Airbnbs and the like. When asked what he was doing to play his role in addressing the housing crisis, he said that Airbnb tax was a way of getting those short-term rentals back into the long-term rental market. Now, we've read with interest a few days ago in an article that there were 394 properties have been picked up using this data and will now pay 50% higher rates. Council is now receiving around, according to those reports, $440,000 more in rates revenue this year, and of course, $440,000 more in rates revenue each and every year if those properties remain in that category. But we were assured at the time that this wasn't about revenue, and in fact, the finance chair, councillor Cunningham, declared that she would be happy if this new rating category didn't raise a single dollar, but we're seeing now it's raising $440,000.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Thank you, move for an extension.
Extension of time for councillor Cassidy has been moved by councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Strunk. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So was this rates category really about more rates? It's not clear yet, because it's been many months now since the Lord Mayor's budget, seven, or getting on seven months later now, this new rating category is brought in, and these properties have been issued rates notices now, and you'd imagine one was self-nominated, a couple of dozen were dobbed in by neighbours, and the bulk of these were done through data harvesting, which we have, of course, paid for. We can't say how much, though, because that's all commercial and confidence. So was this really, I suppose, a question for the Lord Mayor to answer? Was this really about getting more private rentals in the market, or was it about revenue? He needs to be able to tell us now how many of those 394 properties that were identified using this contract have been returned to the private market, because you can assume that this policy was supposedly all about was encouraging the owners of those properties to get that hire bill, to immediately ring council and say, we're going to stop renting these out as Airbnbs, and we're going to get them back into the private rental market. And if he can't deliver on that, then the sum total of his response to the housing crisis has failed. So he has an opportunity today in summing up his ENC remarks and answering a very simple question, how many of those properties have now been returned to the private rental market? Because, you know, apparently, well, if he can't answer that, there's something very disturbing there, if he won't answer it, then we know that that was more about revenue raising than that was about responding to the housing crisis at all. But of course, you know, there's a whole lot of confusion in the Lord Mayor at the moment. He seems a bit panicked in his approach to a lot of things, but there will be a lot of confusion about what council's role can be, and council can do a lot in the absence of a housing strategy. We heard today that apparently councillor Allen's been working on this housing strategy. We don't know when he started, but it was, of course, promised back in 2019. We know from a file request, and looking at that file, it was about that thick, that file, because it had one document in it, where there was a bit of background research done by some council officers and no intervention by the LMP administration about progressing a housing strategy at the end of last year. So presumably over Christmas, maybe they've done a bit of work and they will announce something. But in the absence of a leader who has a vision for the suburbs of Brisbane, this is the kind of response we will continue to get, this small piecemeal approach where he's trying to plug up holes left, right, and centre without any broad vision for the people of Brisbane. Now, finally, the Transport and Infrastructure Futures Board. I'm surprised that Lord Mayor didn't talk about this one, because a few of his friends are on it, are being appointed by him to serve on this board. Now, last time this item came to council, it was at a cost of $250,000, which was bad enough, because at the time, of course, it was being used to feather the nests of LMP members and fellow travellers. Well, that cost is now blown out to $320,000, with LMP mates still being looked after. Michael Calabiano is still on there, collecting his pay, and another LMP friend, John Cotter, has joined as well. He is, yeah, he is, maybe they'll swap out. He is reported to have been on the LMP State Executive and also an LMP fundraiser, an LMP fundraiser at all levels of the party, for council campaigns as well as state and federal campaigns as well. I'm sure the, perhaps the LMP want to take this contract, seriatum, and not vote on it, because clearly that's a conflict of interest in appointing your fundraiser to a publicly funded board position, so he can personally gain from that and pay for it. So, you know, he is heavily involved in LMP internal politics. It's not so clear what skills he brings to this board, however. Given the track record of transport and infrastructure projects under this LMP administration, this board is either giving bad advice or the Lord Mayor isn't taking it. But either way, residents are not getting good value for money here. To get a cushy job in, under this LMP administration, you either need to be a former LMP politician or an LMP candidate, or be an LMP fundraiser. It's good if you can get it, I guess. Sometimes, I suppose, you can pause and wonder, you know, at why people are so roundly losing faith in politics and representative government quite rapidly in Western democracies. And I guess if you read through the LMP's priorities laid out before us, and particularly see very egregious things like that, giving your mates and fundraisers jobs, publicly-funded jobs on boards like that, you get a very clear picture that this LMP administration and their fellow travellers are in it for themselves and not for the people of Brisbane. A couple of local projects that the Lord Mayor mentioned, I'll just mention briefly here as well, the Zilmia Library upgrade, a long time coming. I'm pleased to have campaigned on this upgrade at the last election and sought commitments from the Lord Mayor and now see that lobbying is paying off for my community. This upgrade will service the growing community of Zilmia, but it, of course, just scratches the surface down there. The 2021 census confirms that Zilmia is an area that still faces significant challenges and is riven with inequality. It's an important area for me, but also for Brisbane, with such rich cultural diversity and the home to a large number of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Australians. This community has so much potential, and we hope that we can support them with a council after the next election, with a change of administration, a Labour council that can support them on the ground. We need a bigger, better community centre. The O'Callaghan Park Master Plan needs to be completed, and we need more spend on local drainage footpaths and parks in that part of the world. The Shawquon Vescarpment Project is one that is welcomed by the community and is being funded by the federal government. The small section that this funding covers will see a great community benefit, and the strong feedback I've received from local residents is that not enough ongoing basic maintenance is being carried out on the rest of the escarpment. The escarpment has not been managed properly for too long, and it takes more than a business-as-usual approach of funding that the LMP continue to offer. Time and again, when these issues are raised, the answer is the same, the Lord Mayor hasn't allocated enough money in his budget for ongoing maintenance. We need a better approach in council. If the Lord Mayor is willing, it's already right everywhere across the city in terms of basic maintenance, so if the Lord Mayor is willing to allocate an additional $400 million to his inner-city metro project, he must be willing to spend a few million more on suburban parks and open spaces and give the people of Brisbane the kind of service they deserve. Clause D, the Gardiner Road project, there's not a lot of information that was provided by the public speaker today included in the papers before us today to make a decision on. You know, we know at face value, any resumption can be traumatic, and we have seen recently a number of resumptions that are being challenged on various grounds, and you certainly hope they're being, the negotiations are being handled fairly, and there is a decent outcome for everyone involved, and sometimes resumptions are absolutely necessary and unavoidable as well. But from, you know, and on paper, they're a very easy exercise for ENC to look at this. They look at a map and they see a drawing and a line, they can make a decision, and traffic planners and project engineers can look at this. But there is a real, there's a real human face to all of this, and we heard that earlier today. And given that extra information, you know, we perhaps would have supported this item going through today, and even with the assurances that councillor Wines is going to look at some information that he's provided while the project still continues, I don't think he's good enough, given what we have learnt today. So this is now an item that we won't be supporting. Whether, now, the question isn't whether there will be a fair and decent outcome for the people who are involved in having their properties, or part of their properties resumed, it's whether they are required at all. So I think that needs to be looked at further, so we can't support that item today. Clause E is the LGIP amendments. So this item is for specific amendments to the city plan to ensure the currency of certain policies. Some of the things covered include dog parks, wood barbecues, shadeover playgrounds, standards for park embellishments, et cetera. The proposed changes are going to now, as we see, be consulted alongside the LGIP 1B amendment, which went through council in November last year. Sounds ominous. It seems a bit strange that this item's brought through now and wasn't included with those LGIP amendments last year, because it seems almost like the administration realised these policies needed to be updated to progress the amendments to the LGIPs, to the LGIP that needed to be consulted on. So the consultation on the LGIP now has been delayed. It was dealt with in this council chamber in November last year. It's now, the consultation's now been delayed because of the delay in the update to these policies. Now, our concerns with the LGIP were well litigated last year, so I certainly won't be going into too much of that at the moment. The process around the LGIP, what's included and what's not.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Second. Have an extension of time moved by councillors Cook and Strunk. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Won't be a record. So those concerns were all litigated. The process of what's included and what's left out left a lot to be desired for residents who are seeing their rates go up to record-high levels, but are seeing a lot less for that rates money out in the suburbs. We worry that these policy changes will be hollow, too. Clause F, the minor amendments to city plan, these amendments seem minor on paper when you go through the volumes of attachments there, and we've heard one of those is around the requirements around rooming accommodation. There is an enormous amount of attachments provided, and that's fair enough. There's lots of changes throughout those codes and those sections of city plan. And on face value, they reflect zoning changes in some circumstances and code changes in others, but in many places, little explanation is provided. There's many changes to acceptable and performance outcomes relating to code changes, but what those outcomes mean in reality for residents isn't made clear in the proposed amendments at all. There's just a standard note against all of them, which says the exact same thing and doesn't explain what is changing. So we have learnt on this side of the chamber, like the people of Brisbane, you simply can't trust what the LMP say when it comes to amendments to city plan, and therefore we won't be voting in favour of these amendments.
Thank you. Further debate. Councillor Landis.
Thank you, Chair, and I rise to speak on item C in the Zilmia Library. One of the first events I attended and was very lucky to celebrate the opening of the Brackenridge Library in November of 2019 with the Lord Mayor, and it was a very welcomed and fantastic upgrade that the community has embraced. So at that time, I felt that residents in Zilmia and the surrounds could also benefit from upgrades to the Zilmia Library. So before the last election in December 2019, I created an online petition to harness community support from the residents. In fact, I requested it in my very first newsletter. So, of course, libraries are well-loved community hubs, and Zilmia Library is no different. And obviously, it's more than books that we now borrow from the library. So this maintenance and upgrade was very important, so I was delighted when the new refurbishment plan was announced. The 2021/22 budget saw the design phase, and we are now beginning this month the structural works. The refurbishment will include a new entrance, a vibrant new children's area, a dedicated young adult area, upgraded public toilets and amenities, improved seating for study and reading, upgrades to internal finishes including new carpet furniture and feature lighting, and improved external landscaping. And one of the unique and exciting changes to the external landscape will be the establishment of a Bush Tucker garden, which is something I'm very passionate about. Community and cultural heritage advisers from the local area have been engaged in consultation for the design, and this project has received financial assistance through the State Library of Queensland. Chair, I'm very excited that works are beginning this month, and I know that all councillors value our libraries and will join me in supporting this exciting upgrade.
Further debate. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on all of the items in the ENC report today. Firstly, can I just make some comments on the three contract and tendering reports? Like councillor Cassidy, I also noticed... Like councillor Cassidy, I also noticed that the LMP has been very slack in bringing through their statutory obligations to disclose contracts publicly via this council. And there's just no excuse for that. They have an ENC meeting that lasts approximately 30 minutes once a week. So it's not like they're out of time in making sure that these reports are brought through in a timely way. We met well into December, so there is absolutely no reason why the October and certainly the November reports could not have been brought through before this date. And of course, it's now mid-February because the Lord Mayor cut council meetings so he could go on an overseas junket. So it's really not good enough that these contracts are only being disclosed, in some cases, five months after they were entered into. There are a number of issues in the, in the reports themselves. And I too noted on page six that a number of LMP people are getting a rail's run without any kind of accountability for their appointment to the Transport and Infrastructure Futures Board. There's no minutes, there's no actions, there's no outcomes. And yet, these people are going to be paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, most of them LMP mates, which I think is very problematic. There is no reason to have this board. The Lord Mayor could save $320,000 and invest that in any kind of flood relief, road upgrades, footpath upgrades, backflow valves, stormwater drainage, helping natural disasters here and overseas. But instead, a number of LMP mates are being paid hundreds of thousands of dollars unnecessarily, in my view, and I don't support it. So that is not acceptable. I did note the extraordinary amounts of money going into the LMP libraries, $11.6 million for Evden Park and $1.5 million for Zilmia. And I, I listened, is it? Oh, is it? Oh, I thought, I thought, I thought councillor Landers said it was her library. Well, I, I note, I note that councillor Griffiths has just left, left the chamber, but I'm sure he'd agree with me that we'd just like a little bit of action on Annalee Library. I mean, it's that old, that tiny, and it's, yeah, well, yeah.
This is, this is unacceptable. There's been too much interjecting across the floor. I ask all councillors to observe the proper processes, please.
That was actually councillor Adams screaming across the chamber at me while I was speaking. She did it twice. And I know that she's not being pulled out by name when she does it.
Councillors, I've pointed out, all sides have been not observing the proper processes in this place. Ask you all to do so, please.
I asked that, that is recognised, that was a mistruth that councillor Johnson just verbal that I screamed across.
Let's, councillor, councillor Johnson, there's been an objection to the use of the word screaming. Will you withdraw that observation? Okay. I'm just, just referring.
Mr Chairman, how would you describe councillor?
It's not up to me to, it's not up to me to make a description of it.
Come on, how would you describe it?
It's not up to me to describe it, councillor Johnson. I'm pointing out to you that there was an objection raised by another councillor. If you don't withdraw, that's fine. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yep. So I know that councillor Griffith would agree with me. All we want's a little bit of money for the Annalee Library, which has been neglected by this LMP administration for years and years and years. And I know that councillor Landers stands up and says, it's great that we have all these wonderful libraries in Brisbane, but she's not prepared to support ones that are outside her ward, other than that apparently in councillor, indeed, good ward, in councillor Cassidy's ward. So I don't know what's going on there. Very briefly, there are a couple of other issues in here. There's a significant amount of money going to sports field renovations, $4.8 million. It's unclear to me whether that includes Gordon Thompson Oval at Chelma, but that's something that I'll be following up on. Despite that being announced as a budget project this year, very little seems to have happened. With respect to item D, which is the Gardner Road extension process, that's been taken seriatum, project, sorry, that's been taken seriatum. I don't support proceeding with that after listening to the speakers earlier today. Obviously, we need some more information and that's obviously of great concern to those residents. Item E, the planning scheme changes for the local government infrastructure plan. And this is the parks, right, this is the parks one. This is really odd, what's going on here. And firstly, I want to put on the record that I don't support the Lord Mayor's decision to get rid of wood-fired barbecues in this city. Over many, many years, the Lord Mayor has consistently removed wood-fired barbecues from council parks and not replaced them. There's one in my ward in Rollinson Park in Yoronga and council is taking out the wood-fired barbecue but not replacing it. And I know this is an issue councillor Strunk has raised on many occasions before here. But today, council policy is being changed to completely write out wood-fired barbecues out of council's policy. To me, you know, that's a pretty sad kind of situation because if, if, if there was going to be a viable alternative, that'd be great, but there's not because this LMP administration refuses to replace old barbecues and that is incredibly disappointing. So I don't support the Lord Mayor's decision to remove wood-fired barbecues by essentially airbrushing them out of council policy altogether. There are a number of other issues in here that are really, I, 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 I don't know what council's thinking with this because what council is saying in the policy before us today is absolutely 100% at odds with what our local, can't even call them parks officers anymore because they don't exist, but local council officers say to us. So council is actually finally saying that shade provision is a key consideration in playground design. Well, I've been here 15 years and if I do a new playground, a shade sale is a critical part of that. I can't believe council's just deciding it's a good idea to put it into policy today. It's a little bit too late. But the bigger problem is that council is continuing to say that the use of advanced stock, so trees, should be planted to provide natural shade for playgrounds. Now, every single playground I've got, council officers want to move out from underneath trees. Robinson Park Fairfield, I'm having a battle with them at the moment. I want to keep playgrounds where there is natural shade. That's what this policy is actually saying. But what council is actually doing is moving them out away from under the trees. And the reason they're doing that is because roots are impacting on safety, understandable. But here we are, enshrining into this policy that we are going to be planting more trees around playgrounds whilst being told as a matter of only weeks ago that no councillor, you cannot keep your playground there because there are trees there. I do not understand what council is doing with respect to this. It says here that the trees should be selected to, so they're not toxic, they have non-invasive roots. Well, great, non-invasive roots. I'd love to see that. I'd love to see a tree that roots, you know, don't have some impact on the ground. It's just not possible. That we have to be acceptable leaf litter, fruit fall, they have to be climate resilient, they have to be consistent with the surrounding landscape. Now, look, I am all for trees around playgrounds, but the big problem here is what the LMP are saying in this policy is not what they are doing as of just a couple of weeks ago in this city. So I would like someone to explain what the new policy is around trees, why I am being forced to move playgrounds in my ward out from under natural shade when that does not comply with council policy. And this is the policy. Because that's not acceptable. And I can tell you, I'm going to go back now, right now, to our PPI officers and say, hang on a minute, you know, when you told me I had to move Robinson Park Playground Upgrade out into the sun, not doing that, I don't have to. Council policy says you can have trees and you can have playgrounds under trees. So I don't know what's going on here, but there's a mismatch between what council says it's doing and what it's actually doing. Finally, with respect to item F, and I'd ask its move seriatum for voting purposes as well. Firstly, in August 2020, I moved a motion to prevent rooming accommodation, to start change the city plan to prevent rooming accommodation. The deputy mayor at the time stood up and absolutely bagged me, blocked that motion from being considered and then voted against it. She said at the time, there was a housing policy coming. It's never come, two and a half, nearly three years later, and there is nothing from this LMP administration. And now, they're working hand in glove with George Street and the ALP to force boarding houses into low-density areas and character residential areas in this city. And I do not support it.
Councillor Johnston, your time has, you've finished your time. Thank you very much.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion for an afternoon tea break, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hartnell. In favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Mic is now on. Thank you, councillors. Further debate on the ENC recommendations report, please. Councillor Awbridge.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very excited to talk about items A and C in this week's ENC report, but I don't know where to start with my gratitude or excitement. Like all good things, it takes a few years to get to where we are today and it wouldn't have been possible without a few amazing people. Firstly, I want to thank our Lord Mayor and councillor Davis. Thank you so much for believing and supporting in this vision. When we started designing the Murray Re Recreation Reserve upgrade, the budget, let's just say, was a little bit smaller. But over the years, we could all see the potential of attracting local and international cycling events to Brisbane and the huge economic benefit it would have for our community. We could also see the opportunities for our juniors to train and advance their skills to hopefully one day be standing on the podium at the 2032 Olympics right here in Brisbane. And the opportunity for local cyclists to ride off the road on a dedicated cycling track to provide a safer option for so many to train or to have a leisurely ride with others. I also wanted to say a very big thank you to Helena from our City Projects Office. You have been, you have designed this project within an inch of perfection, transforming the Murray Recreation Reserve into the Brisbane International Cycle Park. You're an incredible officer to work with. You took all of mine and the community's feedback on board and together, we'll soon have one of the best cycling facilities in Australia. Now to my excitement. Works are starting at the reserve this Thursday, which include a new dedicated cycle track separated from the walking track. Why I'm so excited is because this is probably the most complaints I ever got in my office. Cyclists going 70 kilometres an hour, dodging pedestrians, people in their scooters, like younger kids on scooters or bikes, dogs trying to bite the wheels. Bike riders hated it and pedestrians also hated it. So to have them separated is amazing. So this, amongst many other things, will make the Murray Recreation Reserve an international cycle track and one that we should all be so proud of. So from the bottom of my heart, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who has supported this incredible project. The people of Dobbway, thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the item D, the Road Tower Project. I'll speak on the planning amendments in terms of short-term accommodation and rooming accommodation, sorry. And yeah, might just briefly start though by talking about the contract in terms of the, the data gathering to identify short-term accommodation properties. Because I think, yeah, councillor Cassidy was perhaps, I don't know. I guess I disagree with you slightly that it's necessarily a bad thing for the council to be raising revenue via rates from transitory accommodation properties. I, I think reasonable people can probably argue about what the administration's main objectives were in introducing the new ratings category. I, I believe they probably were intended to discourage transitory accommodation in certain areas. But it's pretty obvious that the rates increases haven't been high enough to encourage landowners to do that. And I would suggest to the deputy mayor and the chair of finance and, and other relevant decision-makers that for the coming council budget, it would be appropriate to increase the, the rates significantly for that class of property or that category of land use. The increase that was introduced last time around simply hasn't been high enough to shift the behaviour of property investors. And I think, deputy mayor, there's an obligation on the part of council here to ensure that accommodation that was designed as long-term residential housing is not converted into short-term hotel uses on a, on a massive scale. I was interested to see the figures for this particular data gathering contract because I, I had a mate do this himself, like a volunteer was able to scrape the data to identify the thousands of Airbnb properties that are being rented across the Brisbane LGA. Like, we don't need to spend thousands of dollars to do that sort of thing and identify which properties are Airbnb. We literally just did it with a couple of volunteers and a bit of IT programming skill. So I, I found it funny that we have to spend a lot of money on identifying these properties. But I, I do think it's probably a worthwhile exercise to be a bit more thorough in identifying them. I've reported several to the council and, and my greatest disappointment has actually been that the council says, look, the land is zoned for, the land zoning would permit short-term accommodation here. So even though the building wasn't designed for short-term accommodation, we're going to allow it to continue as a, as a lawful use. And I think that's disappointing. And through you, Chair, to councillor Allen, I would encourage the city planning team to look into that because I think there's a mistake occurring there where buildings which weren't designed for short-term accommodation, the council is still allowing them to be used for Airbnb housing if the zoning of that site permits it. And so you could literally rent out an old shack or like a tin shed on Airbnb. And as long as it's in the particular zoning for mixed use or a zoning that allows short-term accommodation, Brisbane City Council is allowing that tin shed to be rented out on Airbnb. So there's a clear problem there in terms of how the city plan interacts with the enforcement and the building compliance frameworks, et cetera. Turning to item D, I have been helped and expressed concerns about this project for quite some time and those concerns were only amplified today when we heard about the, the impacts that this resumption will have on at least one family and how poorly City Projects has gone about negotiating land resumptions. It's interesting reading the business case where in evaluating the costs and benefits of the project, the business case itself suggests that objections to land resumptions are not particularly likely. And, and in making that assumption, that, that factors into the cost-benefit analysis of the project as a whole. So City Projects and whoever's put this business case together, they're saying, oh, well, the project is worth doing and the benefits outweigh the costs. And one of the reasons that keeps the costs down is that the, the, there won't be strong objections to land resumptions. That's in the business case. Turns out, there are strong objections to the land resumptions and that's going to have an impact on the timelines of the project. It's going to drag things out. But I, I can say for the record that the Greens don't support this project and if we did have balance of power in the chamber, we would do everything we could to stop it proceeding in its current form. I acknowledge that some improvements to the local road network are necessary, but I don't think a wholesale widening of pre-style road is necessary. I think there are other options that should have been given greater consideration. And in particular, the business case doesn't talk about alternatives such as improving local public transport services to take people out of their cars. The traffic modelling essentially says, okay, there are this many more people moving into the area, therefore, there are going to be this many more cars on the local road network, therefore, we have to widen the road. Rather than saying, look, there are more people moving into the area, but we could put more bus, bus routes on and that would mean not quite so many people have to drive. But the council's own business case doesn't explore those alternative options. It simply says, we have to widen the road. And I think that's a great shame. I think it means the council is wasting money on an unnecessary project. I, yeah, I empathise with the residents who are losing a pretty significant chunk of their home. It's like their entire yard, basically. It's not a particularly long property. And I'm also concerned about the vegetation that's being removed because there are quite a few large trees, I would describe them as significant trees, in the front yard that are being removed as part of this road widening or as part of this resumption. And I think it's a great shame that probably the, the greenest yard in that little precinct is going to, going to be denuded of trees. I guess I'd also just remind the administration that the, the long-term future of our city is not car-based transport. The long-term future for our city, particularly in the outer burbs, is to be improving public and active transport connections. And we can do that without widening roads and we can do that without resuming more properties. So I, yeah, I'm, I'm very disappointed the council insists on proceeding with this resumption. I think there are viable alternatives. I, I don't think the project is necessary. I don't support it. And if I had the power to do so, I would. And if I had the power to do so, I would pull funding from this project. I did also have a question for the chamber, which is how many people in this chamber have actually read all the documents for clause D? Could we have a show of hands? How many people have read all hundred and fifty pages of that document? I see councillor McLaughlin put his hand up. He seems to suggest he actually read all hundred and fifty pages. I'm impressed, good on you. I haven't, and I suspect that the vast majority of councillors in this chamber have not read all the documents relating to item D and the resumption. So what's happening here is that councillors are voting on whether to resume part of a person's home without even taking the time to read the objection from the owner, without taking their time to familiarise themselves properly with the documentation. So I think that's pretty concerning from a process perspective. The land actor acquisitions process presumes that local governments will be making an informed decision about whether land acquisitions are absolutely necessary and whether there genuinely aren't any alternatives and whether the benefits outweigh the costs and negative impacts to residents. But here we have a whole room full of city councillors who are voting on whether or not to resume part of someone's home without even having read all the documents. That's, I think, a very concerning process that undermines the legitimacy of the acquisition itself and raises serious concerns about whether due process has been properly followed. So, yeah, I hope that acquisition doesn't go ahead. I hope the council sees common sense and realises down the track that it's not worth the money and it's not worth the hassle and it's not worth the delays to the overall project of having a long protracted dispute with the relevant residents in court. Finally, just on the question of rooming accommodation, I think this highlights the difficulty of centralised regulation and nuanced city planning that meets a complex city's needs. Because, to be honest, there are some areas where we do need to be a little bit more flexible and generous in terms of how rooming accommodation is defined. I was interested to hear councillor Johnston's comments, because I know of many sharehouses in her electorate, not rooming accommodation, but sharehouses that have a single lease, that have more than five unrelated adults. So there might be six or seven people living in a five-bedroom house and that's how they keep their rent affordable and that's how they live in the south side. But the rooming accommodation definitions as they currently stand actually make that kind of dwelling unlawful or in violation of the C-plan. And I fell foul of this myself several years ago. Basically, I had to move out of my home because the city plan said that I couldn't live with my friends anymore. And that was really crappy, that really sucked. And so I think in that respect, this change that the state government is bringing in actually has some positive benefits. It's going to facilitate a more flexible approach to sharehousing. I think the difference, and I would suggest to the Chair of City Planning and to the Lord Mayor, that this is something that could be looked at in future if you are proposing to have a more nuanced definition of rooming accommodation, is that there is a significant difference between a household that has a single lease where there are maybe six or seven people renting out that place versus a rooming accommodation that has many different leases for many different rooms. And that's the distinction we need to drill down into.
Councillor, Sri Ranganathan, your time has expired. Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to speak on items B and C. And for my colleagues on this side of the chamber, I think they will be very aware of what I'm going to be speaking on. In particular, in item C, it's the subsection item fifteen. And in item, sorry, sorry, item six, sorry. And in item B, it's item one. And they both relate to the Wadeville Street project, which is certainly a very important one. So we've had stage one A, which was the Wadeville Ritchie Road intersection, which was outside the Polara State School. But stage one B is on Wadeville Street where it intersects with Parkwood Drive. Now, this is a very important intersection for the suburbs of Heathwood and Polara, and particularly over the last three years, there has been substantial growth throughout both of those suburbs. And we've also had a lot of new residents move into the area. So they've come from areas outside the city of Brisbane and we do welcome them to our local community. But with this growth, we are also upholding the responsibility. We all know in this place that it is not easy to manage the infrastructure where there is a situation of rapid growth, because sometimes a suburb can grow much, much faster than the pace of the infrastructure. And I do say that there has been, through the amendments that have come through in the LGB and the LTIP, so there's been a fast tracking of over twenty-nine million dollars worth of infrastructure. But importantly, on the Wadeville Ritchie Corridor project, stages one A and one B, the council officers did a significant amount of work supporting what I was advocating and ensuring that the documentation, the business case, the designs were all prepared and submitted to the federal government through the LRCI. Now, the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Grant came through for these two stages, one A and one B, and we are, in the local community, extraordinarily grateful for that support and that funding from the federal government to ensure that our council projects that we can deliver on the ground are delivered sooner for our local community. And the reason this is so important is because it enhances safety in a school precinct. Now, in item C, we have the actual awarding of the contract to Dovall, and that is over three point eight million dollars. And in item B, we have the APA relocation costs. So for those of you who are not aware, we've had the oil and gas pipelines that run pretty much right through the centre of my ward. And quite a number of years ago, we had the oil pipeline burst over at Alchester and that oil pipeline has now been drained, but we still have the APA gas pipeline. And because a lot of those underground services are right in the immediate corridor of where we need to do these road improvements, it is vitally important that we get this moving. Now, when I was out at Polara State School yesterday afternoon for their school leaders' induction, it was lovely to see that the construction team is on-site and through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Wines, they have set up their construction zone, they have started working on, there's a big island that comes out that interferes with that smooth flow of the intersection, they have started some of the work on that. There is a lot of work that will be undertaken and I would like to say to the council officers that are working on this project, a very big thank you for really understanding the important needs of the school to make sure that during school drop-off and school pickup, there is no reduction in any of the vehicle lanes to ensure that we have as smooth as possible a flow through that critical peak period of time, but also to make sure that those school students are immediately looked after in that timeframe. Because the last thing we need is heavy equipment going at the same time as when children are walking around. And through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Wines, I know that stage one A has been well-received by the community, because there is now that safe pedestrian crossing, that supervised pedestrian crossing for those children to go from Polara State School and cross on Ritchie Road. So these are the important projects that the Shrima Council is endeavouring to deliver for our local communities. It is not just about projects in the CBD. Whilst they are important and we have our walking connections by projects like the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge that we had the presentation and Transport Committee about this morning, these local projects out in the suburbs, in the southernmost part of this city, are just as equally important to our residents to make sure that these children and their families can get to and from the schools and to and from their different places within the suburbs as well. Now councillor Wines, through you, Mr Chair, I do say that one of the other added bonuses of this intersection upgrade is certainly one that councillor Murphy is well aware that I've been advocating for, and that is the new bus services that are generating through that precinct as well. So we now finally have a Polara bus as a result of a lot of advocacy and I can say that that one-two-six service is getting well patronaged. And there is also now two Polara State School buses, the eight oh three and the eight oh four. And having this traffic intersection at Wadeville Street and Parkwood Drive signalised is going to permit a very, very smooth flow of traffic, because having that timed regulation of the traffic means that people are able to go through that intersection in a safe, controlled and courteous manner. Now, that is very important when we are talking about school zones and I think that this is a project that we have worked very hard with the officers on. And I would like to place on the record my thanks for all of the officers that have worked on this project and that will continue to work on this project, because their diligence, their professionalism and their consideration for my local community is absolutely obvious when they come out to meet with the stakeholders. So they've had meetings on-site with the school's executive team and can I say that they, the school's executive team are very appreciative of the time and effort that the council officers have put into ensuring that the communication process is clear, that the project timelines are explained and any concerns that have been raised have been addressed. So through you, Mr Chair, I'd just like to say big thank you to the council officers and it's great to have this project kicking off. And I fully expect that when we have that turn-on of the traffic lights, that there will be a lot of people in the community very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Cumming.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I'll be faster, I'll be quick. Contract on page four A nine, the George Clayton Park playground at Manly. Incidentally, George was alderman of the area from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-seven and started the great seventy-one-year reign of Labor in Wyndham, and I'm sure there'll be many more years to come. This playground would probably be described as aging these days, but I reckon it was built first when I was in council, so that was about twenty-five years ago. There was talk, well, there was discuss with council officers about what was going to go into the project. There was talk of a second-hand Liberty Swing being available. That's the special swing for disabled children and I understand that is going to be part of the redevelopment. The Lord Mayor's flyer that he put out around the Wyndham, Manly area in recent times does appear to show a Liberty Swing, so that's good. The other part of the playground needing renewal is the lighthouse and I'll be keen to see whether it's brought up to standard as well. My own children enjoyed the lighthouse when they were young. It's a, of course, it's not a real lighthouse, it's a make-believe lighthouse and it's got nice views out over the bay and it's good exercise climbing up and down the steps inside the lighthouse, the staircase in there. The other contract I wish to refer to is B eight on page nine. This is a very well-located playground adjacent to the Wyndham Junior Rugby League, least area and next to the Wyndham, Manly ward's greatest sporting complex, which is Kitchener Park. In my experience, playground situated close to sporting fields are heavily utilised, as younger children can play on them whilst their brother or sister are training on the main field next door. I have playgrounds in Wyndham at the Vikings, at Aussie Rules Club at Wyndham West, the Wyndham Rugby Union Club and Bayside United Football Club, and they've all been great success. I pushed for a flying fox and some exercise equipment to be included as part of this playground upgrade and that is occurring, so I look forward to this playground being completed in the near future.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Farm.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item D of the ENC report on Gardner Row extension resumption. It seems like a no-brainer to me to support further infrastructure investment in a growing suburb like Rochdale. Just as councillor Wines stated earlier, land resumption can be an unpleasant and uncomfortable part of infrastructure investment in our city. We know it can be a very difficult emotional time, especially for those long-term residents who have to sacrifice part of their lifestyle for the betterment of our city as a whole. And I sincerely thank those who have contributed to the process. But I wonder how the local Labor state member, who has been advocating for road widening and providing more on-street parking for residents, will react to Labor's latest attempt to delay and understand they are going to vote against the delivery of road widening to her area. And as for councillor Sri Ranganathan, I wonder how will your resident feel when they know you move a motion to delay bike infrastructure construction and investment? And the argument you just used against this item actually fits infrastructure projects, most of the projects in your own ward and which you advocated for. So your arguments today make me feel more comfortable in voting against those projects in the future. Mr Chair, infrastructure investment is important to the growth of our city and I will continue to work with the local residents and of course with councillor Wines in addressing the concerns raised, but I think it is hypocritical and disgraceful for the opposition to play politics over this project of city-wide importance. So I urge everyone in the chamber to vote for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on clause A specifically, contracts and tendering, contract number twelve, which is the Casemore Way Park, stage two, construction of the playground. I wanted to speak on this one and I have spoke on this one on a couple of occasions, right, but I wanted to put some more context to this park and how important this park is to the residents of Richlands, specifically the residents that live along Progress Road through to Garden Road and then from Government Road through to Garden Road. This development or this playground is going to support a large number of units of accommodation, medium to low density, in other words, townhouses basically. Now, this proliferation of townhouses has been happening for well over ten years along this stretch of road, along Progress Road and Government Road. The green space that I and one of my team identified some years ago, we thought was just privately owned, we didn't know council even owned it until we were driving past one day and I said to one of my team, well, what do you think? Maybe we should check on that before we, when we get back to the office. And we did and we found it was council. So it was a green light for me in regards to trying to establish a park. Now, this will be the only new park in my ward for the last seven years, right? And we've had enormous amount of growth, you know, in Dewandella and Ellen Grove and of course in Richlands as well. And being that this is the only new park, right, we just had to treat it with the respect that it was due, of course, because we have hundreds and hundreds of families that are now currently living along that corridor and we will have hundreds and hundreds of more families when the full development of that stretch is realised. I've seen plans for another one just not far away as well, which is all going to be in walking distance of this park. Now, I say walking distance, because that's the only way you're really going to be able to enjoy this park, because there will be no parking almost in front of the park or inside the park, right? So this is a walking park, basically. Now, this park unfortunately, right, will not have, but will need, right, a footpath from Government Road down Casemore Way. Unfortunately, that development of houses along Casemore Way to that park has no footpath. And of course, the road itself is only about seven metres wide. So you can imagine the people that park on that road at night time or whatever time through the day, it's not a lot of safe space for people wanting to walk down to the park when it gets established. There's also missing links along Government Road, right? Yes, the developers along Government Road have been making that provision, right? But there's a lot of missing links. So again, we have Government Road, right, which is a rural road, has never been upgraded. We're relying upon developers to do that, right, and they have been doing that. But it doesn't actually have a safe pathway through to this park. And most of the accommodation that is being built or has been built is a And most of the accommodation that is being built or has been built is along Government Road and there is no other park available for the residents, right? So honestly, when the development that started happening along Progress Road and Government Road, started happening well over 10 years ago, there was no provision. There was no provision. And what was actually bought, eventually bought, of course, that piece of land, became the provision but there was no plan to develop it until we came along and said, I want to spend $250,000 putting some playground equipment in this two-hec air, who two-hectare green space. And then all of a sudden, council officers became very interested because I was putting some of my SIP funding into that and then everything happened after that. Now, it's important that we establish parks in those suburbs that are growing and not necessarily spending and shouldn't be spending hundreds or tens of millions of dollars establishing or redoing a park like Victoria Park before we do the basics, the basics in the suburbs where the ratepayers live. And hundreds of people in my ward are going to use this park once established that will never go to Victoria Park, I'll tell you that right now, or very few of them will, if they even know where it is. So we've got to start prioritising the suburbs and this is the campaign that we've been running is the Forgotten Suburbs and every time you turn around and have a look at this sort of a situation with town planning, right, you can see that this administration and previous administrations, LMP administrations have been ignoring the suburbs where they should be investing the money from the ratepayers who actually pay the money, right? So and then on top of that, as it was mentioned by the opposition leader, right, we get things like this. And I bring this up because Casemore Way is in here and we get an update, a summer newsletter from the Lord Mayor, you couldn't get a bigger picture than that, right? Now, that would have cost thousands of dollars, right? That would have cost thousands of dollars. Honestly, I could have used that money to establish, which is going to be in stage three of this park, for a flying fox and a few other things like a barbecue as well. So could have used that money. I already went out online through Facebook and a newsletter, email-based newsletter as well that I put out, which costs council no money at all, pretty much no money at all. And they already knew about all this stuff that was in the summer update. So honestly, I don't know why that had to be done. I could have used the money much more responsibly within this park. And so the park, as I say, is two hectares, beautiful plan for the park and we have at least four stages that we're going to be developing through the SIP funding and if there's some Capital Works money, that'll be terrific as well. But we need to do more for those areas that do not have parks. And Dewandella, which is quite near Polara, which is getting a district park, which they deserve, right? But so do the people of Dewandella, need a decent park and there's been a small little bit of green space that's just off Redhead Street that we will be developing a park there as well, but it's a very tiny little, probably wouldn't even be an acre of land, right? And there's a huge amount of development happening along that Redhead Street and some of the other streets as well. So really, we need to invest in the suburbs, right? It doesn't all have to be in the intercity areas, which is where we see the majority of the money that is invested spent. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Wise?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise in to discuss item D of the ENC report, the consideration of the Gardner Road extension project. It has been discussed at length in this place but I will make some key points. The Gardner Road proposal will carry up to 14,000 vehicles per day in 2031. Councilors should recognise the importance of this as a continuation of the work that we've done on Rochdale and Priestdale. This area is a growing area of the city. We carry a lot of the new subdivisions for standalone dwellings will be in this part of the city. That's why it's necessary to improve infrastructure for it. There was an interesting criticism of the project that it was for motor vehicles. It stands as a project that will vastly improve the active transport through that area, the bikeways and walking walkways for local residents to be able to use that area. Also, something that's not been touched on is that this is a necessary response to some of the closures that the state government in particular have brought in around the closure of School Road and other works around the South East Freeway and also the metro work. So this roadwork is actually in many ways a response to the needed improvements for our metro system, a mass public transport system, and it massively improves the active transport. But I noticed that those things can be easily dismissed when it's convenient for some members of the cross benches and I find that really disappointing because you want people to engage in a meaningful way and for them to be consistent in the way that they view projects, that when a person was to claim that they support active and public transport, they would, but rather because it's convenient and easy and because they can look a person in the eye and say that they're on their side, that they turn 180. And I think it's important to reflect on how easy it is for opposition and crossbench councillors to take the easy path and something that they do too often. But if you believe in improvements of public transport, if you believe in improvements to active transport and if you believe that normal people have a right to move around the way that they choose, then I think you should support this project. It's that simple. It is necessary to connect the outer South East. Councillor Strunk makes a fine point about expenditure in outer suburbs. I hope that he takes the spirit of his comments about parklands and reflects them upon this, this roadway needed for an equivalent, his southwestern area, an equivalently distanced place from the centre of the city in the South East. The public speaker, I have a great deal of sympathy for her circumstances and as a result, I wanted just to table some documents just so that councillors understand what is being discussed. So I table the concept proposal for the Gardner Road extension and the connections through Priestdale. Thank you. I also table an aerial view of the land proposed for resumption, which indicates that the new boundary for the White family home will be consistent with the other rear boundaries of their neighbours. It also shows that in the past we have gone around their property but to have a proper roadway and a proper active transport link in particular, the land identified does stand out from the other properties and means that active transport cannot be an option if the land is not resumed. Thank you. And this is a final piece of paper that indicates the approximate location of the new back fence. So I just wanted those to be submitted for consideration for councillors so that people had a better understanding of what it was we're talking about. As I say, we have engaged with the White family in a way that we would ordinarily do. We are consistently generous and forward in our dealings about resumption. As I say, it's an unpleasant part of infrastructure programmes and I empathise greatly with their circumstances. However, if we are going to have a transport system in all three senses, whether it be private vehicle, public vehicle or personal active, the land, if it's not resumed, the project really can't proceed in an active transport sense or it becomes very dangerous for active transport users. And that should be an important consideration. It also vastly reduces the effectiveness of the private motor vehicle proposal. So can I ask councillors to be consistent in the principles with which they ordinarily would stand in this place, rather than take the easy way?
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillors, Reganathem?
Will councillor Wise take a question?
No.
Councillor Wise will take a question?
And support this proposal that will do so much for the outer South East and be an important part of our entire transport network.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items E and F and just to kick off, item E. Item E is amendments to two planning scheme policies associated with the local government infrastructure plan, the infrastructure design plan scheme policy and the transport access parking and servicing planning scheme policy. As the Lord Mayor said, both planning scheme policies cover a broad range of design standards and requirements for trunk infrastructure, including parks, roads and drainage, as well as infrastructure handed back over to councillors' assets. Mr Chair, you may recall in November last year, council undertook its five-yearly review of our local government infrastructure plan and as such, these amendments are required to ensure our policies and design standards align with that review. This includes upgrading the specifications for parks, including ninja course embellishments, revised standards for dog-off leash areas and electronic barbecues as the preferred type of barbecue. We have also clarified car parking and active transport requirements such as bike racks for the range of park types across Brisbane. As the Lord Mayor indicated, we have bolstered the requirements for shade provision in our playgrounds in line with industry best practice. And this will ensure our planning scheme and anyone who may undertake works on our playgrounds are aware of our commitments to shade, shading all of our playgrounds over the next three years. It is proposed that consultation on these policy changes will be undertaken in line with the consultation from both LGIP and LTIP, which is anticipated to occur later this year. And to councillor Cassidy's point, consultation of the LGIP and LTIP amendment package will not be delayed. It is still with the state government for the state's first interest check. The state's KPI meant that a response was due to council on the 23rd of January and to date we have not received a response. Moving on to item F, the minor amendment package M. In December, the state made further changes to the planning regulation specifically to rooming accommodation and while councillor Johnston isn't in the room, she made much of council working hand in glove with the state on this particular matter. Now, the reality is that the state made the changes to the scheme without any warning and without any consultation with local governments across Queensland. And in fact, on the 2nd of December 2022, we received a letter from the state about this particular planning regulation change and I guess when it became effective on the 2nd of December, the same day we got the letter. So look, you know, that's not really working hand in glove and we would have liked to have been consulted on this, but at any rate, any change to the planning regulation by the state government requires significant time and resources to both understand and implement the change and reflect them in council's planning scheme. It is disappointing the council was not part of the review process, especially when changes such as these can and will have significant impacts on our community and our local streets. Impacts such as safety, fire hazards and amenity concerns like car parking, waste and refuse collection are some of those concerns. As these regulations override any council local planning scheme, a minor administrative amendment is required to ensure our city plan maintains its currency and effectiveness. According to the state, the amendment is intended to streamline approvals for rooming accommodation to provide greater housing diversity in the low-density residential zone, the low-medium density residential zone and general residential zones across Queensland. And it was rather interesting to note councillor Cassidy's comments on this particular item because these particular changes are way more significant than the changes to the overlays and he actually made no comment whatsoever on this particular change. In terms of where we go with this now, this will give rise to an update to city plan and will be required to refine the regulation of small-scale rooming accommodation and dwelling houses in low-density residential zones and provide statewide consistency in relation to the types of housing expected within residential zones. We will also allow for small-scale rooming accommodation uses that do not require planning approval, such as a material change of use in low-density residential zones where certain requirements can be met. And will also enable council to require a planning approval for dwelling house developments in the high-density residential zone and medium-density residential zone. So in essence, those zones that already are targeted for medium and high density, any changes there would require a council approval, but where they're occurring in low-density residential zones and low-medium residential zones, there's no requirement for council to approve those. Further, under this minor administrative amendment, there has also been updates to zoning and overlay maps to reflect current development approvals and recent ministerial infrastructure designations. It is proposed that the amended planning scheme changes will take effect from the 10th of March 2023 when city plan is next updated. And I commend both these items to the chamber.
Further debate? Any further debate? Well, there. No, something else?
Sorry, I was just getting a hand signal. What was that? Sorry.
No, that's separately cereum. So for the record, items A, B, C and E, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Plaques, have we got a result?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, one against and six abstentions.
Thank you. Councillors, please resume your seats. We're now voting, councillors, as you resume your seats, on item D in the recommendations report for adoption. All those in favour of item D, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division's been called by councillor Cook and councillor Johnson. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Okay. Thanks, Billy. Please close the bars. Plaques, have we got a result?
Mr Chair.
Silence, please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and seven against.
Thank you. Declare that carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We're now voting on item F. Item F in the recommendations report for adoption, ENC report, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillors Johnson and Cook. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Please close the bars. Plaques, result please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, one against and six abstentions.
Thank you. Declare that item carried. Please resume your seats, councillors. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee decisions, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item A is the carbon-neutral council emissions reduction strategy and also councils...
Lord Mayor, first you have to move it.
Oh, sorry. Okay, let me start again. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee is delegate of council during the summer recess 2022/23 on matters usually considered by that committee are noted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee is delegate of the council during the summer recess 2022/23 on matters usually...
council during the summer recess twenty twenty two, twenty three, on matters usually considered by that committee be noted. Lord Mayor, is there any debate?
So, as I was about to say, item A is the carbon neutral council emissions reduction strategy, and also council's twenty twenty one, twenty two annual report to the Australian Government's Climate Active Carbon Neutral Programme. Now, we're very proud of council's carbon neutral status as certified by Climate Active, a agency of the Commonwealth Government. And we're also very proud that going beyond carbon neutral, we are now striving towards a carbon emission reduction of more than thirty percent by the time the Olympic Games come around. Now, this is something that our emissions reduction target and strategy is on par and in lockstep with the Queensland Labor Government's Emission Reduction Strategy. So, it'll be interesting to hear what Labor councillors say about that target and that strategy, given it's the same target that the state Labor Government has. But there are some differences that I need to point out. First of all, not one single government department in the Queensland Government is carbon neutral. The Queensland Government itself is not carbon neutral. Now, if you would ask yourself, a government that is serious about climate action surely would be taking climate action. What would be one of the first things that they would do? Make their departments, even just some of the departments, carbon neutral. And so, I went to a search to identify whether any government departments in the Queensland Labor Government are either carbon neutral or on the path to being carbon neutral as certified by Climate Active. And you know what I could find?
Zero.
None. But you'll be pleased to know that the Department of Environment plans to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty.
Oh.
Not next year, not this year, not even five years' time, but twenty thirty. So, the Department of Environment in the Labor State Government plans to be carbon neutral as certified by Climate Active by twenty thirty. Wow. Wow. Now, adding on to this, I've made it very clear in the past, I get really frustrated by people who grandstand and say, oh, we should be doing more, and then not doing anything. And you'll remember that there was a series of virtue signaling motions put forward in councils all around Australia of declaring a climate emergency. Remember that?
Yes.
And it was like, oh, if you don't declare an emergency, you obviously don't care. And we're like, yeah, been there, done that, we've moved on, we're actually doing something. Well, I went back and had a look at the Climate Active website to work out how many councils around Australia had declared a climate emergency, and then how many have actually become carbon neutral. So, in New South Wales, for example, yeah, thirty-eight councils declared a climate emergency. There's a similar number in Victoria. In Queensland, there were two councils that declared a climate emergency. I will point out that neither of those councils are carbon neutral.
Yes.
So, they declared an emergency and then did absolutely nothing to make their own operations carbon neutral. Now, if you go to the Climate Active website and you search for city councils and determine how many councils around Australia are certified in the Climate Active Programme as carbon neutral, you get less than fifteen. There are five hundred local governments in the whole of Australia, five hundred, less than fifteen are certified as carbon neutral. And a whole lot more declared climate emergencies. I mean, really? You can say you care about something, or you can actually do something about it. And these guys laugh because their friends up the road say they care, they set a target, and they've done nothing. Can't even get one department, not even the environment department is carbon neutral. So, let's find out which councils in Australia are carbon neutral. Brisbane City Council, the city of Yarra, the city of Sydney, the city of Subiaco in W A, the city of Melbourne, city of Darabben, city of Adelaide, Bayside City Council, the city of Logan. Congratulations, Logan, they are the second Queensland council to become carbon neutral. And guess what? They didn't declare, they did not declare a climate emergency, they just got on and did it. So, congratulations, Mayor Darren Power and the Logan City Council for becoming second city in Australia, sorry, in Queensland to be carbon neutral. There's also Marunda City Council, the city of Moonee Valley, and Moorland City Council. That's all I could find out of five hundred local governments. Really? It's actually quite disappointing. So, we will continue not only to make our operations carbon neutral as certified by this national agency, but we will strive to reduce our emissions by more than thirty percent by the time the Olympic Games comes around. Now, that's going to take a lot of effort across every range, every area of council. One of the key things that we're working on at the moment is dealing with Minister Bailey about making sure that our transport fleet can be zero-tail pipe emission vehicles going forward, and we're looking forward to progress in that respect. We're also gearing up our food and organics recycling programme, which is already available in six thousand households, and we're looking forward to expanding that. And this is over and above our major programmes to increase recycling, to reduce food waste, to also to reduce the emissions of council facilities, and also to generate green power. And so, not only have we made our facilities more energy efficient, we've also installed a whole range of solar arrays on the roof. We generate green electricity by capturing and burning to create green power, landfill gases from a number of sites across the city. And there's a whole range of initiatives that have seen us already, at this point in time, reduce our emissions as an organisation by twenty thousand tonnes, twenty thousand tonnes. And so, to put it in perspective, already where we're at, and that's not even, that's not even looking at the big thirty percent reductions that we'll get going forward, that's equivalent to taking four thousand three hundred cars off the road. So, these are the emission reductions we've already achieved. But obviously, when it comes to becoming carbon neutral, it comes to net zero, you reduce your emissions, and the emissions that you can't reduce or haven't reduced, you offset. This is global practice. This is not something that is somehow questioned. This is the way it is done. You reduce your emissions, and the emissions that have not been reduced or are remaining are offset. And how do you offset them? You accept that we live in a global environment. We accept that emission reductions in Australia are important, but so are emission reductions around the world. And particularly, someone living in a situation of poverty in another part of the world, being given the opportunity to have renewable power supplies is important. And so, it is important that we treat this as a global issue, which is what it is, and we have a range of both local offsets and international offsets, acknowledging that there is a global market for offsets. We also make sure that we don't invest in offsets that might be questionable. We don't invest in offsets that, you know, we can't guarantee are being made appropriate, appropriately. And so, I can confirm that we do not buy offsets from land-based carbon abatement projects outside of Australia. These are ones that have had question marks raised about them. We do not buy those. We do not purchase offsets from Vera. But in fact, we simply trade other offsets on a platform provided by Vera. So, we're not buying offsets from Vera, we're simply using their platform to trade offsets. So, this is something that we'll continue to monitor and manage going forward, and obviously, we'll continue to strive to reduce our emissions as a city. It's something that we should all be very proud of. We're one of less than fifteen councils in Australia to be certified as carbon neutral. But that is not enough. We are striving for massive emission reductions going forward. And I can tell you, Adelaide City Council is carbon neutral. Good on them. They have twenty-five thousand residents. The city of Adelaide has twenty-five thousand residents. In fact, the city of Sydney has two hundred and fifteen thousand residents. There is nothing of our scale in local government that is carbon neutral. We'll continue to be carbon neutral, we'll continue to strive for massive productions.
Your time has expired. Further debate, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. That was more fantastical than Alice in Wonderland, that little story there. It's an embarrassment to the people of Brisbane to have this policy and this Lord Mayor claiming, claiming that we are in fact carbon neutral, when there are so many question marks now, so many question marks about using carbon offsets to simply claim carbon neutrality. We, of course, support the targets. I don't know what the Lord Mayor thought I'd get up and say, oh, we don't support the same target as the state government because they're proposing it. Of course, we support those emissions reductions targets, we just don't have any faith that you will get us there, Lord Mayor. Because this fancy report that's before us today, nice glossy report, doesn't change the fact that the only way in which you are achieving carbon neutrality is by purchasing overseas carbon credits, using millions of dollars of ratepayers' money to use to purchase carbon credits in China and India and other places as well. That's bad enough, but we're now seeing these reports that the carbon offsets provided by Vera, the company that this L M P administration uses, are potentially phantom credits and don't represent genuine carbon reductions. Now, Lord Mayor's just claimed, well, he doesn't, his administration doesn't purchase any of Vera, he just uses the platform, and they're the intermediary, I guess, in which they purchase them from, and they then provide paperwork in a tick and flick exercise to Climate Active, which then certifies council as carbon neutral. Wonder whether the Lord Mayor watched Four Corners last night. He might not have had time. I do suggest that he does watch that programme, because there is some startling information in that programme given by former employees of Climate Active about their approach to verifying the carbon credits purchased through platforms like Vera. There are no eyes on the ground. There are actually no mechanisms to ensure that overseas purchased carbon credits are genuine carbon credits. Now, the Lord Mayor can stand up and wave his arms around and say, this is a Commonwealth platform, and, you know, oh, well, everyone uses this platform. Sure, he can say that, but he cannot guarantee, he's claiming that this administration, that this council and his administration is carbon neutral, whether it's through the Climate Active platform, or the Vera platform, or any other platform that his administration uses to purchase overseas carbon credits, there is no guarantee that those carbon credits are genuine. That's been, that's been laid bare now, and I suggest that he looks at that investigative report that Four Corners did last night, because that is going to raise a whole lot of questions about whether the Brisbane City Council is genuinely carbon neutral. Now, we know this is all about greenwashing. Lord Mayor is terribly worried about what's going to happen in March next year. But we warned years ago, we warned years ago, that if you don't have eyes on those projects, then you really can't ensure those claims are true. If those carbon credits are generated locally here in Australia, and you can see the tangible benefits of those schemes, then sure, you can. But many of those projects are uncovered by The Guardian recently, and Four Corners last night, are in fact accelerating, accelerating carbon emissions through their actions. But each time Labor raised concerns that simply purchasing carbon credits to offset emissions was lazy, a very lazy L M P approach and fraught with danger, and instead, we needed to find local solutions, the L M P laughed it off. Well, the evidence now is very clear, being lazy can't be an option anymore for Brisbane if we want to be genuinely carbon neutral. Greenwashing by purchasing carbon credits won't cut it anymore. This report confirms something we've known for a very long time, Chair, that diverting organic waste from landfill is clearly not on the priority list for this L M P council. We know that that is the single most effective way for a council to reduce emissions. This report makes that very clear. But what it doesn't make clear is what council is going to do to reduce emissions, to reduce the burden on ratepayers having to buy overseas carbon credits to achieve genuine carbon neutrality. Practices in technology and transport, construction, energy use obviously must play a part in reducing our carbon footprint, and not just this organisation as council's carbon footprint, but also the residents of Brisbane's carbon footprint. But the only way to reduce emissions for every single resident that lives in Brisbane, and it is something we can all do together collectively, is F O G O, food organics, garden organics, organic recycling on an industrial scale, whatever we want to call it, we need to get organic material out of landfill. We also know that there are more than seventy councils, it's heading well towards a hundred councils probably now around Australia, and many here in Queensland that are rolling out a genuine organic recycling system in their cities. It creates local jobs, generates local carbon credits, and reduces fees and charges for residents. But we know that this L M P mayor, Adrian Schrinner, and his L M P councillor are definitely not serious about F O G O, because the papers before us today prove that. They're not serious about diverting eighty thousand tonnes of organic material from landfill each and every year. The report says that in the last five years, some one hundred and eighty-two thousand tonnes of organic waste was diverted from landfill thanks to residents out in the suburbs of Brisbane who took the opportunity to have a green garden waste bin at home. That accounted for that diversion of organic material going into landfill. But what this report doesn't say is that during that same period, four hundred thousand tonnes of other organic material was deposited into landfill to rot and to emit dangerous gases into the atmosphere. This L M P administration is not serious about a Brisbane-first approach to cutting emissions and achieving genuine carbon neutrality. You don't have to believe us when we say that, that they're not genuine in their approach to a Brisbane-based, carbon-neutral approach. You can just believe the report that's before us today, it lays it out in black and white. Emissions reduction strategies listed in the Waste Management section don't mention F O G O or organic recycling on a citywide scale, or whatever term you want to use for F O G O once. It doesn't mention it. It simply says that this administration is going to continue on in a business-as-usual approach to organic waste management. What they're currently doing now, which is nothing, it's not good enough what they're doing now, but they're going to continue to just do the same thing and hope for a different result. They say they will also continue to do work with council staff to contribute to a zero-waste ambition. I think that's the only sort of new, new thing that's going to be happening in the waste management space in achieving carbon neutrality. So, the L M P, we know from their actions, have personal ambition, a lot of personal ambition themselves, but it's clear, when you look to the future of Brisbane as a city, they have no ambition for the people of Brisbane, they have no plan for the future. They are, you know, this is a great example of why the L M P in Brisbane City Council are the very definition of conservative in a political sense, continue to do the same thing. They, their approach in, they see a problem on the horizon, so they window dress a bit to sort of make out like they're doing something, but they really don't want to change, they're resistant to change, they like how it was before, they don't want to deal with problems that are facing our city. And I guess the courier mail was absolutely dead on, I don't always agree with the courier mail, but they were dead on when they described Schrinner as a strong conservative voice here in Brisbane. He and his administration is now very much a relic of the past. You can't bring this document to council today and say, oh, look at the L M P, they're the, they're the teals of Brisbane, they're the clean, green, sustainable team, they absolutely aren't. They're not serious about the challenges facing the residents of Brisbane for decades to come. If they were serious, they'd be talking about spending ratepayers' money, investing in industries here in Brisbane to support jobs, reduce emissions, and reduce fees and charges for residents. But instead, they will say, nothing to see here, let's just buy some overseas carbon credits, and that'll do. Well, unfortunately, Lord Mayor, that won't do for the people of Brisbane.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. I rise to speak on item A, the council carbon neutral emissions reduction strategy, and council's annual report to this... annual report to this Australian Government's carbon-neutral programme. I agree with many of the things that the opposition leader has just said, namely that Brisbane City Council is continuing to do the same thing and they're definitely not getting good outcomes for the people of Brisbane. I just want people at home to understand what we're actually talking about here, because the Lord Mayor stands up and says Brisbane's carbon-neutral city, that's, that's not actually true, that is not true. Brisbane City Council Proprietary Limited, the corporation, has bought a bunch of offsets and done a few other things, and the council corporation is carbon-neutral, and even that's debatable, but we'll get to that, not the city of Brisbane. Now, the big issue that we have here is, in cities all over the world, councils are leading change within the communities that they represent. This Lord Mayor and this council are not doing that, and for as long as I've been here, they've talked about the same, the same thing, which is, we'll buy some credits, we'll put a few solar panels on the roof of the council buildings, we'll buy a few buses that are, you know, a bit better for the environment, and, oh, streetlights, but they've got the money from the feds to do that. That's pretty much it. Composting is largely being kicking and screaming, and it's interesting to hear the Lord Mayor saying he's going to roll it out more, this is not like he's been talking to the community about that or to council or to us, so it is, it's very interesting to hear some of these things. What the LMP has fundamentally failed to do, and this is after being in this council, controlling this council fully for nearly two decades, is recognise that there is a leadership, a policy and a practical role here for council, the corporation, to help Brisbane city, the people who live in it, become, reduce their energy consumption, to offset their carbon emissions, to reduce their energy use, and to generally make a contribution to reducing carbon emissions, that is the objective of all three levels of government in Australia. Now, there might be a little disagreement here and there about what that should be, but we are all agreed, we need to reduce our energy use, we need to improve the way in which we manage carbon offsets. This council fundamentally doesn't do this. Now, I've stood up and said this several times over the last few years, and, you know, I, I don't think the LMP will actually listen to me, but this is where council should be going. Buying a few carbon offsets absolutely is not getting the job done. Now, I just want to talk a little bit about what's actually in this report as well. The first thing that's in here, and the Lord Mayor, the Lord Mayor made a big point about saying we don't buy any emissions from Vera. Well, I don't know what the Lord Mayor is looking at, but his report that is put forward, clearly Vera is being used as the broker for carbon offsets. Now, I did not see Four Corners, but I am familiar with The Guardian article and their investigation, which indicated that up to ninety percent of all of Vera's carbon reduction projects were possibly worthless or phantom credits, ninety percent. Now, this is the organisation from whom council is purchasing the bulk of their carbon credits. There is a massive problem with that. So, this council not only has failed the city of Brisbane, and that's its residents, to work with them, because that's the objective here, if by 2032 we want to have a green city, that does not mean to a single person outside this room, the corporation sitting up there on George Street, it means the people based in the city, the householders, the businesses, the retailers, the sporting clubs, all of those people. This council's view of what is considered to be carbon-neutral is too narrow, and that is what needs to change. We should be looking at things, and I've said this many times before as well, when I first started in this council, you got a rebate for having a water tank. We're going to go into another drought, and there's nothing like that. When I started here in council, you got energy efficiency devices in your household, council came out and helped you reduce your household energy emissions, we're not doing anything like that. This council doesn't contribute to solar power and solar projects, and the Lord Mayor will stand up and say, oh, this is all to do with other levels of government. It's not, it's not. The Lord Mayor wants to stand up and say, we're a carbon-neutral city, no, we're not, it's a carbon-neutral corporation that's buying dodgy offsets from a discredited broker. That's what's going on here, not actually helping this city to become carbon-neutral, which is a great goal, a great goal. We should be looking at planning changes. Yes, council has to work with the state, but the fact that new homes, new apartments can be built that do not include energy efficiency measures, water reticulation and reuse as standard, solar power as standard in any new homes being built is just outrageous. And again, the state and council have a role to play here. These little boxes are getting built in the suburbs, and often there's not even, it's not even meeting the basic requirements that are in city plan now, which, you know, is to allow breezes through, you know, two different accesses in the apartments. You know, I've got apartments being built that, that don't have external windows, it's just crazy, crazy. You, you, you don't see any apartments, now council's allowing rooftop terraces, even in low-to-medium-density areas, where are the solar panels going to go? They can't go on the roof, so there are massive problems with the way in which this council is approaching planning to make sure we get well-built homes that can meet the environmental needs of our city, and that means weathering droughts as well as weathering floods. Trees is another big one, I mean, this administration loves to talk up how it's planted two million trees, it will never, ever report on how many trees it cuts down every single day. This council is not even replacing the number of trees that it removes. There are no protections for trees on private property, and we see the first thing that any developer does when they buy a block is knock down every single tree on that block. Council should be looking at more and innovative ways to protect trees on both public property and private property, and that is not being done. We need to look at planting more trees. This council's given up in my area, I'm sorry, councillor, you've got contaminated land, we couldn't possibly plant a tree there. Well, that contaminated land is all over the city, and what's this administration doing about looking at innovative ways to actually plant out, decontaminate and to green up these areas? Absolutely nothing. Now, this administration is getting it wrong, claiming that you have a carbon-neutral city when you are buying dodgy offsets from a discredited company is not carbon neutrality, it's not leadership and it's not what this city needs. You know, I, I don't profess to be the greenest person going and, and have all the solutions on this, but there are simple, practical things that we should be doing, without question, and water is one of the biggest ones. Look at the storms we've had today, all this water is running off, stormwater harvesting systems should be standard in any new major buildings, solar power should be standard in any major new buildings. We should be looking at vegetation, I mean, this administration's got rid of setbacks altogether, so you can't even plant a tree anywhere, you know, you can't get them to, to look in the planning solution, you know, the courts now basically say landscaping can also be driveway, can also be open space, and there's less room for trees on most blocks in the city as well. So, look, I, I think this is an exercise in greenwashing, I don't think the council is getting this right, and I think that the Lord Mayor is trying to bamboozle people into thinking this city is doing something positive on reducing our carbon emissions, which is a commendable goal, when they're not. And I'll leave, I'll leave everybody with just a couple of figures from the report itself. The report says, and I'm on page twelve, over the six years that council has tracked its emissions, year one, when it went to year two, they went up, year three, it went down, year four, it went up, year five, it went down, year six, which is the year they're reporting on, it actually went up.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired, are there any further speakers? Sorry, councillor, yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I rise to speak on item A. As the previous Environment Chair, the Schrinner Council's ongoing commitment to not only carbon neutrality, but also to meaningful and long-term emission reduction is something that I am proud to support and proud to talk about today. You see, critics present these outcomes as a binary choice, Mr. Chair, don't offset emissions, just reduce them. But, Mr. Chair, in council, we are actually doing both, and I'm really proud of that, we do have the runs on the board, Mr. Chair. The fact that we are even here today talking about this in the chamber shows that this is clearly very important for the administration. We not only have our carbon-neutral disclosures report, but also our detailed carbon emission reduction strategy. Council has a sophisticated approach to accounting our footprint and also the ways that we can reduce it. We've achieved a seven percent reduction in emissions. And about two years ago, Mr. Chair, we employed the services of Mr. Craig Rucastle to launch the Brisbane Carbon Calculator. This is a very practical initiative that this administration has introduced to help residents understand exactly what their emissions are and the simple steps that they can take every single day to help reduce their emissions. We use a hundred percent renewable energy for our buildings and our facilities, and we have a number of achievements when it comes to solar and LED lighting upgrades, and also our innovation in asphalt production. We were early to move on the electrification of public transport, something that other councils and state governments have failed to do. We are now well on the journey when it comes to food waste recycling. Notwithstanding the achievements, we have set ambitious targets for our years ahead. Let's not just talk, we have a detailed strategy, we have an implementation plan to get us there, and I'm very proud about it as it's set out in this item. We have a team of dedicated energy and carbon experts in council who advise our administration, and I would like to place on record my thanks for their work. I also commend councillor Davis and the Lord Mayor for their strong and unwavering leadership in their space.
Thank you, further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Yep, yeah, thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this item, but listening to councillor Cunningham's waxing lyrical of what this council is actually doing, I just wanted to bring up a couple of items, really coal-faced stuff. And the first one was kitchen tidies. Now, these kitchen tidies have been around for probably a few years, and we came across them on, on a, on a list of what was in, in storage for council, along with some other stuff as well. Anyway, so we grabbed a few hundred to start with, and we went through those. People came into the ward office, believe it or not, came into the ward office to pick up a kitchen tidy, so that they could compost at home, right? We, we, eventually the stock depleted, we couldn't get any more, and then we were told that there was some other kitchen tidies that were going to be ordered to replace those. We couldn't, we kept checking, they didn't come through, and then we, we started getting calls from people that actually received Living in Brisbane, I believe it was Living in Brisbane edition, saying that you could pick up a kitchen tidy if you wanted to compost at home, but you have to go into the ward office. We contacted the store, the stores, and, and they said, we haven't got any, but they're on order, but it's going to cost you about five dollars forty for each one of those this time. So, listen, I mean, that's a very practical thing that this council is supposedly doing, but isn't doing. And I, I wonder why that's the case, right? You say one thing, but you do another. The other one was worm farms, right? There was a, a good quality of worm farms in, in the stores as well, and we ordered a hundred, and they came out, they came in, and of course, they took up a lot of room, but I'll tell you what, the people, my residents, were up for them, they really were. All we had to do was to put something out, and, and every week, at least another ten were being picked up, right? Because people are keen as mustard to compost, and of course, they, of course, those worm farms also give you some really great fertiliser as well. And if one thing about people in my ward, they're great gardeners and they, they really love those, but we can't, again, get any more, they're gone, and they're not going to be replaced, it looks like. So, you know, you talk about all this carbon-neutral stuff, but when it comes to the coal-faced stuff, if you're doing it, you're not doing it well enough, but in a lot of cases, you're doing it, or you say you're going to do it, but you're not doing it at all. And I just think that is just so disingenuous to the people in my ward, that really were up for doing local composting, and we're going to get behind the programme. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Davis, are you writing to your feet? Yes.
Well, thank you very much, Chair, and I rise to speak on item A of this ENC information report. Earlier this month, council submitted its annual report to Climate Active, including our public disclosure statement, our carbon inventory, and for the first time, council's emissions reduction strategy. As the chamber is aware, the federal government now requires carbon-neutral certified organisations to adopt a minimum emissions reduction target of thirty percent over a ten-year period, and the strategy before us today is part of that. Mr. Chair, under this LMP administration, council has become the largest carbon-neutral organisation in Australia. We are a huge organisation and we have, and we do have a big carbon footprint, and that's why I'm very excited that in this strategy, we're bringing together all of the work we're doing across council, the council programmes, to reduce our emissions and to keep Brisbane clean, green and sustainable. And as we see in the strategy, most of our emissions come from construction, from public transport and waste management. Mr. Chair, these are our core businesses, and many of these emissions are currently unavoidable. We have to deliver essential public infrastructure, a public transport network, and of course, collect the rubbish. That's what our residents expect, and that's what we deliver. And we're taking steps to do so in a practical and sustainable way, unlike those opposite who think the solution to an output of almost six-hundred-thousand tonnes of carbon dioxide is to declare a climate emergency and slash red bin collection in half. But under the Schrinner administration, emissions reduction strategy, we will continue to deliver the basic and essential functions of local government in a clean and green way. Already, we're purchasing one-hundred percent Australian renewable energy to power our facilities and have grown our solar portfolio to more than three-point-two megawatts worth. The new Brisbane Metro depot at Rochedale, which I know councillor Murphy is working very hard to deliver, will be the biggest ever solar plant in council's history. And once complete, the new Brisbane Metro depot will reduce our carbon footprint by more than sixteen-hundred tonnes each year, and that's the equivalent of taking about five-hundred-and-fifty cars off the road each year. And of course, the depot will service and power our new fleet of sixty-zero tailpipe emission, tailpipe emissions metro vehicles, and we're working towards an agreement with the state to phase out diesel buses in our twelve-hundred-strong fleet. In waste management, we're embracing the exciting potential of landfill gas capture technology. At the Brisbane landfill in Rochedale, we're not only saving the atmosphere from harmful methane emissions, but we're generating enough green energy to power seventeen-thousand homes. And in construction, just as one example, we're delivering the cleanest and greenest road resurfacing programme in Australia, recycling more than two-hundred-thousand tonnes of asphalt each year to deliver the smoother suburban streets programme. We're also leading the way in recycling and repurposing one of the most difficult materials plaguing landfill across the globe, with councillor Marks leading our investment in innovative ways to recycle rubber to use to produce even more sustainable roads. Mr. Chair, this strategy captures what the Schrinner Council is all about, effective and practical climate action, not virtue signalling, it's our roadmap of achievable, real-world solutions towards a net-zero council. And in fact, most of these are things that we're already doing, and it's working. Mr. Chair, the progress we're making on reducing council's carbon footprint, last year, when we submitted our report to Climate Active, councillor Cassidy stood up and said our carbon footprint is getting bigger. Well, I'm pleased to say that he's wrong, Mr. Chair, because this year's public disclosure statement, which clearly he hasn't read, continues to show a strong downward trend in our footprint, which has reduced by about seven percent. which has reduced by about 7% since we first became carbon neutral. And given the progress that we've made so far and the accelerating advancement in technology we are embracing, I'm very, very confident that we will meet and beat our emissions reduction target by 2031 as we gear up to host the first-ever carbon-positive Olympic and Paralympic Games. Mr Chair, there are a number of things that were spoken about by some councillors opposite, and I just want to restate a few things. And that is about what we achieve and what we show in our public disclosure statement to Climate Active. Again, councillor Cassidy, he sits in the chamber, and he declares that, in his opinion, we aren't carbon neutral. And I would take the opinion of our carbon specialists in council ahead of councillor Cassidy, because council does the responsible thing, Mr Chair, and offsets its emissions with investment in carbon abatement projects around the world. And whilst it might be his opinion, Mr Chair, it's not the federal Labor government's opinion, because they continue to certify Brisbane City Council as carbon neutral. The Lord Mayor has always said, and he restated it today, that tackling climate change is a global problem that requires a global response. What happens in China, and what happens in India, and anywhere in the world, it does affect us, our climate and our way of life. And so, it is not, rather, why shouldn't we be investing in carbon offsets overseas, particularly in some of these developing nations with far worse footprints than our own? We may be a local government, but we are a local government.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, Chair.
Oh, point of order, you councillors, ring it up.
Will the council take a quick question?
No.
We are a local government, Mr Chair, with a global view. We don't take the view that because it's outside of our patch, we can't do anything about it. Mr Chair, I did watch the Four Corners programme last night, and the reports and claims that were made in that episode were quite concerning, particularly for some of the local communities. But, like in any market, there are some participants out there that don't do the right thing, but this is exactly why council does not buy this type of offset. Council has had no dealings with the companies that were named in that report, and I understand that in light of it, action has been taken against at least one of these road companies. What was also clear from the episode is that offsetting emissions is the right thing to do, and that's why we do it. I can't speak to Climate Active's own processes, but it is a federal market authority, and it's the one that is the most trustworthy source that we have today. Offsets that are purchased by council are subject to an incredibly rigorous scrutiny. We do everything in our power to interrogate the integrity of the offsets that we purchase, and these offsets must be accredited by Climate Active, which is, again, the federal body that's been established, might I say, by the Rudd, Gillard Rudd Labor Government as the National Carbon Offset Standard. Climate Active only recognises two international offset projects accredited by two reputable standards, and that's the Verified Carbon Standard, VCS, and the Gold Standard. And on top of this, council undertakes its own due diligence on carbon abatement projects that we invest in. We conduct our own research into these projects and their operators. We don't purchase land-based offsets from overseas because we know that they might be vulnerable, and some of the risks that are highlighted in last night's Four Corners programme, we are aware of, and that's why we don't invest in them. In our evaluation process, we score projects with independently verified social, economic or environmental co-benefits, or evidence of stakeholder engagement processes and environmental assessments more highly than others. And because offsets are financial investments, or rather, instruments, they are traded by corporate treasury under council's financial risk management framework, and we undertake due diligence of all brokers that we process through. Mr Chair, VerA is an organisation which accredits international offset projects against the Verified Carbon Standard, and verified projects are then listed on the VerA registry. VerA doesn't run or manage projects, and nor do we buy offsets from VerA. The federal government, through Climate Active, recognises the VCS as one of only two reputable international standards tradable in Australia. Council hasn't spent anything with VerA, our investment goes towards the projects generating the offsets. Mr Chair, there are many organisations that use offsets to claim carbon neutrality, including Melbourne Sydney and Adelaide City Council, as well as, as the Lord Mayor said, another 11 local governments. It's also used by Labor's friends in the super industry like Sebus and Care Super. And could you imagine, Mr Chair, the irony of councillor Cassidy telling Planet Art, Australia's most trusted environmental not-profit, that their climate credentials are bogus because they use VerA offsets too? Mr Chair, we are proud of the work that we are doing in this space.
Time has expired, thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, that's been an interesting discussion, and, you know, really what it comes down to, if you really want to summarise what's been said, it's an administration, council here that's leading the way in Australia for local government when it comes to climate action. And then it's a group of people with their heads buried in the sand on the other side that can't get their head around the fact that an LMP administration could be leading the way. They just cannot, they cannot comprehend it. They cannot get their head around it when their own Labor colleagues all over the place aren't actually taking any real action. And so, this really says it all. It really says it all. Councillor Cassidy, trying to portray me as some kind of Conservative, was funny. Quite a few people in my own party don't think that. There's even been people trying to kick me out because I'm not a Conservative enough. But that's okay. I didn't join a Conservative Party, I joined the Liberal Party. I am a Liberal. And I know that councillor Cassidy and his colleagues don't understand what a Liberal is, but a Liberal is about actually taking action to get things done. And it is about making sure, rather than virtue signalling, we actually do something about it. Because in the end, outcomes are the important thing here. And so, we'll continue to progress in getting the best environmental outcomes, the best outcomes for our city. And I would also say that councillor Davis pointed out some other organisations whose reputation has been just besmirched by opposition comments. Well, let me point out another couple of great organisations in the Brisbane community who aren't large organisations but are really taking real action. Corinda State High School is certified as carbon neutral in the Climate Active Programme. I wonder if they're going to get attacked for having some kind of bogus accreditation? The Ashgrove West Kindy is carbon neutral under the Climate Active Programme. Is that a bogus certification as well? Or is it just because it's an LMP administration that, I mean, they are so transparent, they are so transparent in their views, they are so transparent in their politics, we are transparent in our actions.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no.
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Decision called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Looks like it's behind the bars.
Yeah.
Thanks for leaving, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eight in favour, six against and one abstention.
Thank you, councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee decisions, please.
Sorry, Mr Chair, I'm just getting my notes. Oh, thank you. Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the summer recess 2022/23 on matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it is being moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report setting out the decisions, the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the summer recess 2022/23, matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted. Councillor Davis, is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. We had a number of items considered during the recess. The first was, item B was a park naming, which was the formal renaming of the park known as Father Jack Madden Place Park on the corner of Tathra Street and Webster Road, Stafford, as Tathra Place Park. Item B was also a park naming, which is the formal naming of the playground noted at Calligan Park at 340 Zilme Road, Zilme, as Uncle Lewis Orchard Place, who was a very well-known and very well-respected elder in the northern suburbs of Brisbane. Item C were three petitions requesting council support of a proposed memorial in Callonvale District Park in Callonvale. I know councillor Owen has been working very closely on this particular memorial. And item D was a petition requesting that council remove or relocate the gazebo in the Avenue Park at Sunnybank Hills. And I leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, is there any debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair, I rise to speak on item B, the park naming at Calligan Park, sorry, the place naming at Calligan Park, the new playground as Uncle Lewis Orchard Place. Uncle Lewis Orchard was one of the most powerful and passionate men I have met in my time as councillor. I got to know Uncle Lewis through his work at the Kubara Kindy, where he was a board member right up to the day he died. Throughout his life, Uncle Lewis committed a vast amount of time and effort across our community, working with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. He worked for Dundalai House, Murray Watch, the Umpi Karumba Corporation and the Aboriginal Legal Service, as well as Kubara Kindy. Uncle Lewis truly lived a life of service, and many in my community can attest to the impact that he had on them. He was a fierce advocate, a compassionate elder, and a real friend to so many on the north side of Brisbane. After his passing in February last year, I was approached by his family about naming the soon-to-be-upgraded O'Calligan Park playground in his honour. As a long-term Zilme local and respected community elder, Uncle Lewis had a strong connection to O'Calligan Park and the nearby Zilme PCYC right next door, becoming a vital part of their Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander youth justice programme. It was at the Zilme PCYC where Uncle Lewis and a busload of kids from his beloved Kubara Kindy, as well as kids from other local schools, sat in the hall to watch Kevin Rudd's national apology speech. He often referred to both this moment and the ceremony that took place a decade earlier, where Labor Lord Mayor Jim Sawley welcomed Indigenous elders into city hall and presented them with the keys to the city of Brisbane. Those were some of his political heroes, as he used to say. As I said in this chamber, about a year ago, after his passing, Uncle Lewis was one of my political heroes. To see his legacy and profound impact on our community, all you have to do is look around the north side. After working through the necessary requirements with council and consulting other local organisations, I'm proud to see this park naming progress today. A special thanks to Susie Orchard for providing so much valuable and rich information about the life of Uncle Lewis, and to local organisations like Kubara Kindy, Kibingai and Zilme Community Centre for their support of this application.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? Councillor Davis?
Oh, sorry, councillor Owen, I didn't see. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, councillor Owen.
Mr Chair, it gives me great pleasure to speak tonight on item C, and particularly, this is a very important local addition to not only our community as a local memorial, but also it is of significance for our city of Brisbane and for those who have served our nation in times of conflict and in peace, and have put themselves on the front line for the democracy that we have the privilege of bearing the benefits of today. So, there can never be enough said for the sacrifice that has been made by so many who have gone before us. And I would just like to say to my local veterans who are working with me on this project, an absolute debt of gratitude is owed to all of you for your feedback, your interest and your contribution to this memorial and the process that we have been undertaking. In fact, at four o'clock this Thursday afternoon, we will be meeting once again to start the preparations for Anzac Day, and through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Davis, I would like to say it's great to know that we will actually be breaking ground within the next week and a half, and it is something that the veterans are certainly looking forward to. For many of my residents, they've had to either go up to Sunnybank or down to Greenbank, which is actually in Logan, and they asked me a number of years ago, can we have our very own memorial? So, there has been a process that our local community has certainly undertaken, and there is significant support for this memorial. So, I am very, very pleased that it will be actually constructed in Callonvale District Park. The funding for the memorial has been provided through my Lord Mayor's Community Fund for Callonvale Ward, and I think that this is a really appropriate recognition of the service of all of our local veterans, our men and women who have served our nation in uniform over the many years and continue to do so. And in closing, Mr Chair, I would just like to say, all who have served, thank you for your service.
Thank you. No further debate? Councillor Davis, no write or reply? Okay, we now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair, I have a petition for Aspli and also one for Stafford.
Thank you. Any further petitions? No further petitions? Can I have a motion for receipt of the petition, please?
I'm sorry, Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
Thank you, it is being moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result in office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak about a few achievements from the Marchant Ward over the recess. We've seen the opening, or the switching on of the lights at Kirby and Ellison Road upgrade. This has been a long-anticipated upgrade for the residents of Aspli and very welcome. We've had so many thank yous because now it's safer for people to cross, especially if you're going to the Guide Hut or to our wonderful Marchant Park. It's been a real welcome to the local area. Also, the new toilets for Frederick and Anne Park are finally open. Thank you very much to councillor Davis's team. And Bradbury Park, everyone, Bradbury Park just keeps on getting better. I can't wait for the anticipated opening in the next few months. Now, something a little bit, a little bit... opening in the next few months. Now, something a little bit embarrassing, but I'm going to share for you. Marchant Park Warehouse Cricket had a cricket tournament over the weekend, over last week, for blind bowls and all-inclusive bowls, which was a great achievement. And I must thank Australia Cricket Warehouse Cricket for putting this event on. However, as a youngster, I was a cricket tragic. Kepler Vessels was my hero. I have been waiting to meet Kepler Vessels. For those youngsters who are in the team who don't know who he is, or not a cricket tragic, he played for Brisbane, he played for Australia. He's the first international cricketer who has made 100 runs for two different countries. He was also the captain of South Africa in 94, which I had the great privilege of sitting in Newlands, watching that test, supporting Alan Border, but of course supporting my Kepler. Now, my daughter, this is what a tragic I was, was going to be called Kepler if she was a boy. However, Kepler King did not work too well at that stage. Kepler Vessels, I must thank you for your passion in sport, not only for cricket, but also your training of boxing and everything else. But I also have to apologise for the very embarrassing meeting of the local councillor. I was a big groupie. I had to apologise. I just kept on speaking without thinking. The foot was in the mouth, but he was very gracious and did laugh. So, again, thank you so much to Australia Cricket for putting this wonderful event on. I'm happy to say Marchant Ward will be hosting, I'm not going to give too much information, but I know the deputy mayor's going to be a batter, an event on the 18th of September this year, where we have, we're going to be including blind cricket as part of this. We are going to have the Marchant 11 play at Gibson Park against Stafford District Cricket to raise awareness for cricket. I can't wait to expose my team, but it's a big secret now. Already said one. The deputy mayor, I'm a bowler, so let's see how we go. And to finish it off, after the main game with the all abilities cricket. So, I'd like to thank again District Cricket for being a part of this. And yes, I may have to write a letter to Kepler Vessels and see, at the great all-rounder, to see if he'll join our team. Thank you.
Any further general business? Counselors, three, Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of things, bus route, green space, zoning issues. Just first off, I'd like to thank councillor Murphy and the transport team for their great work on the new 86 bus route. It's really exciting for the Gab Ward to have our first free bus service ever, as far as I'm aware. And I want to sincerely thank and congratulate the mayor and the chair of transport and the entire team for pulling that service together. I think it's a real asset to the community. I'm already hearing a lot of positive feedback from residents and seeing that the usage numbers are slowly increasing. So I hope that the mayor will be alert to the fact that that is proving to be a very popular service already, and that it won't just be a one-year trial, that we'll be able to keep that service operating long term. It's filling an important need in terms of connecting different parts of West End and South Brisbane. I also did just want to highlight that it would be great if that service started a bit earlier. Lord Mayor, as you might be aware, currently the service runs from 10am until 11pm. And it's great to have a service that runs until 11pm seven days a week. I appreciate that a lot of services don't run that later on weekends. We do have 30,000 people in West End and South Brisbane, so it's certainly a big catchment. But the point is, Lord Mayor, it would be ideal if that service could start a little bit earlier. 10am's good, but 8am would be a lot better. I understand one of the main reasons that the initial timetable didn't start a bit earlier was that it's been hard to secure enough bus drivers for the morning peak periods in Brisbane at the moment. And I expect that, I accept that that's a genuine challenge. But I hope through you, Chair, Lord Mayor, that as the availability of bus drivers increases, we'll look to put those services on for the morning peak as well. Secondly, I just wanted to note that we had a recent announcement in the mayor's newsletter about a dog-off-leash area for South Brisbane. And I've been talking for some time about the need for a dog-off-leash area, and I wanted to thank councillor Davis for hearing that need and doing her best within the constraints that are available to us. But I think the location, to be blunt, it's better than nothing, but it's suboptimal. And what it really highlights is that we do still need new parkland somewhere in the centre of West End. And the dominant strategy from the LNP at the moment seems to be that we'll wait until the Olympics, and then after the Olympics, we'll secure some of that riverside land along Parmalet. And I want to say very clearly to councillor Davis and to the Lord Mayor that we can't wait until the early 2030s to get new parkland for the 4101 postcode. I've said it here before that West End's population has increased from about 8,000 to 16,000 in the last couple of years, and South Brisbane's population has increased from about 6,000 to 14,000. So we've had an increase of something like 20,000 people in the 4101 postcode and no significant increase in parkland. So, Lord Mayor, I know you can't magically create parkland overnight, but I want to emphasise to you that you're going to have to create new parkland before the Olympics and before that riverside industrial land that's set aside for the media centre, et cetera, becomes available. So we do need to create new parkland somewhere in the 4101 postcode. And I know that in the local government infrastructure plan, there is a new park identified in the LGIP, but the council officers, I think, haven't been given the support they need from the administration to identify and secure sites within the LGIP-defined area. So there's a park there, it's been a commitment of the administration for some time that the park would be delivered, but you haven't done it. And so that's a growing concern, and it makes it really hard to find space for dog-off-leash areas. It also makes it hard to find space for a skate park. I've been going on about a skate park for some time now, and we still don't have a skate park in the 4101 postcode. It's a very young community. It's a community that really values those kinds of recreational activities. And all we've got is a tiny little pin drop of a bowl over in Kangaroo Point that's not really accessible for West Enders anyway. So I really would like to see this administration take that need for a new skate park facility in the inner south side seriously. Finally, just on planning matters, I wrote to councillor Allen quite some time ago about what kinds of land uses and activities were permitted on industrial sites. And councillor Allen, through you, Chair, I don't think I ever did receive a proper response to that. I'm sure it's coming, but it's been several months now. The issue is essentially that there are many kinds of activities that have operated in warehouses for many years now. And I think particularly of live music concerts, dance studios, art workshops, et cetera. These are essentially industrial activities in that they are industries which can generate a lot of noise and often require a lot of space. But the standard interpretations of council's city plan don't ordinarily permit those kinds of activities in industrial sites. And I think that needs to change. I think we're long overdue for a change in that respect. And it wouldn't be that hard for the council to do it. It doesn't necessarily need to create new use codes, it just needs to allow uses like theatre use in the industrial zones of city plan. So it's not a change that should take a great deal of extra administrative work. But I think the core point here is that these uses are already happening. For decades, musicians and artists and dancers have been using warehouses and industrial sites for dance classes, for even, yeah, for concerts, for recording studios, et cetera. And unfortunately, this administration, I think, has been a little too slow at recognising and formalising those uses. So it's not that I'm asking for something new to happen, or a change in how industrial land or industrial sites are currently used. I'm simply saying, let's recognise the long-running uses of these sites for artistic activities, and make the necessary changes in city plan to support that. The same probably goes for gym activities. I've had a conversation recently with someone from one of the doggy daycare services. Currently, there's nowhere for daycare for dogs to operate in the city. It's not allowed on residential zone land, it's not allowed on retail sites. A lot of those doggy daycare facilities have been set up in industrial sites and warehouses, but they also technically aren't allowed there. I believe in councillor Cunningham's ward, possibly one was shut down recently, or there was a place operating in Cooperoo, and basically they had to let staff go and close down the business because the council said that that particular use didn't comply with city plan. And to you, councillor Johnston, I don't think the problem is that they need a DA. I think the problem is that it's not a defined use. So they don't actually know, the council officers don't actually know how to class or categorise it. So. Yeah, yeah. The experience has been that it's been quite hard to get DAs for some sites. And anyway, the broader point is just that we do need that reform of industrial land zoning. And councillor Allen, I've been waiting quite a while, just for a reply to my email, to at least let me know whether you support those suggestions, or whether the administration is headed in a very different direction. And one of the requests in that email was to at least give some guidance to the compliance and enforcement teams that change is coming, so that they don't need to be too aggressive about shutting down recording studios and dance studios and small theatres that are currently operating in those warehouse spaces. Because at the moment, if they get one single noise complaint, they'll go out to the industrial precinct and find wherever that dance studio is operating and issue them, show cause notices and tell them that they need to spend tens of thousands of dollars on DAs, et cetera, et cetera, in order to operate, which is not viable for a smaller business that's just a short-term tenant. So this is becoming a really big issue across the city. I've heard from now dozens of different businesses and artists and community groups that are trying to operate sustainably in these sites. And yeah, fitness groups as well, there's a really wide range of activities that are quite appropriate for those industrial areas because they need to make a bit of noise and because they need a lot of space. And given that the sorts of activities that those industrial sites were once used for probably aren't as commercially viable in Australia these days, at least not in the inner city, that it's time to make those changes. And I hope it doesn't take too much longer. Finally, I just wanted to make a really quick point, that the public demand for more green space in new developments is still growing. I regularly get complaints from residents that there's not enough trees or greenery within the new development projects, both high-density apartments but also suburban subdivisions. And I don't think the council's deplanting changes recently go far enough. I think we need to be requiring firmer deplanting minimums on suburban and detached dwelling developments. And we also need to be increasing those deplanting minimums for high-density apartments. So hopefully the administration hears the community on that and starts to take a bit more notice. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further speakers in general business? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, earlier today, I said in the motion of condolence with respect to the earthquake in Turkey and Syria, that I suspected that the Lord Mayor had spent more on his overseas trip to the US than he was spending on earthquake relief. I've now caught up with some ENC papers, and I can see that the Lord Mayor and his staff member, the cost was $21,000, which was slightly under the amount that he's given for earthquake relief in Turkey. But then I noticed that the environment chair is going on a junket to Japan as well, so that's 10 grand. So $31,000 for LMP, councillors and staff to go on overseas junkets, and $25,000 for earthquake victims in Syria and Turkey. I just thought it should be on the public record that the Lord Mayor thinks that overseas junkets for himself and his mates is more important than helping poorer countries recover from one of the most horrific natural disasters in the world. And I didn't even have the facts and figures, and I was pretty much on the money. I think it's disgusting.
Further general business? Declare the meeting, oh, sorry, councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak just very briefly, if I can, about the 19 Days of Handstand Challenge. Nearly three years ago, Hannah Clark, Alia, Leyana and Trey were murdered at Camp Hill, and it's been a long three years for her parents, Sue and Lloyd. Every day, they've worked to create awareness about coercive control and bring about change. Mr. Chair, they've achieved remarkable progress, even bringing about that legislative change. And they've also been named Queensland's Australians of the Year. They're also making progress towards completing Hannah's sanctuary, and this is a place for women and children to begin rebuilding their lives after leaving a DV perpetrator. It's been a really difficult journey for them. Amongst all the grief and the overwhelming sadness, Sue and Lloyd still find moments of happiness when they remember Hannah and her children. Sue and Lloyd also want Hannah to be remembered for all the fun and the loving stuff that they did together, and that happened to be handstands. So that's what's behind the 19 Days of Handstands campaign. I have to admit, and you probably know that I'm terrible at handstands, but I'm giving it a go to show my support for her family and to show support for thousands of other victims who suffer just like Hannah did. I want to say thank you to my colleagues, both here in the chamber and abroad, who have jumped on and got involved in the Handstand Challenge, especially as well to my local state MP who gave it a go yesterday. You can join in on social media, too. Please make sure that you tag Small Steps for Hannah and hashtag 19 Days of Handstands. Thank you.
Further general business? Councillor Huang?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just rise to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy belated Lunar New Year. This year, the Lunar New Year actually was a bit earlier. Normally, Lunar New Year falls in the month of February, but this year it fell on 22nd of January. And of course, it is one of the most significant celebrations in Asian culture. But there's a bit of variance. In every other country, we celebrate the Year of the Rabbit. Whereas in Vietnam, they celebrated the Year of the Cat. So I did a bit of research. There were a few myths or stories, and one of them was that there was no rabbit in Vietnam. That's why they replaced rabbit with cat. I'm not sure how accurate that is. But anyway, I'm sure everyone enjoyed the festivities and celebrations of the Lunar New Year. And of course, there were lots of events celebrated, and I'm sure probably all of you've been to some kind of Lunar New Year celebration. But I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor for hosting a civic reception in City Hall here. It's widely welcome and liked by the multicultural communities. Because normally, the state parliament and also Brisbane City Council celebrates with a civic, well, with a reception. But this year, apparently the premier went on holiday and forgot to book the date. So there was only a celebration hosted by Brisbane City Council, by the Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinah. So I think, you know, that shows how we care about the multicultural communities. And of course, talk of the Lunar New Year, I have to say the Year of the Rabbit is a symbol of longevity, peace and prosperity. And of course, according to the Lord Mayor, in his word, it is also about multiplying. So, yeah. So hopefully, everyone multiply in their wealth and health. So, yes. Yeah, but, you know, it can be applied to more things. And also, 2023 has been predicted to be a year of hope. So I'm sure Brisbane City Council, under the leadership of Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinah, that will make sure that it is a year of hope for everyone in Brisbane. Thank you.
Further general business? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise to speak on some local events and also some very important people in my ward. Can I say to councillor Huang and to all of the people celebrating the Lunar New Year, Xin Yan Kuay Le Gong Shi Fat Tai Chuk Mun Non Nam Moi. So it is just my privilege to be able to go and celebrate at the many different functions right across the city with these people when they are celebrating the Lunar New Year, because it is an important part in their calendar. And to all of the Punjabis who celebrated last month, Laurie, it's been a few years since I was in India and celebrated Laurie over there. But I know it is a very special time, and there are many Punjabis who live in my ward, so I do extend that greeting to them for Laurie. Mr. Chair, the weekend was very sad in a number of respects, because there was the memorial service for the fall of Singapore at Anzac Square, which I attended and later wreathed. But also, I attended the memorial service for the earthquake victims for Turkey and Syria. And to join with those people in the local community who have lost loved ones, they are very, very devastated. It is incomprehensible. It is, it is incomprehensible, the amount of lives that have been lost so quickly. And to talk to people who had literally been in some of the same buildings that had collapsed into rubble a week prior to that earthquake, they, they are going through such feelings of emotional, it's, it's an emotional rollercoaster for them. So whatever we can do to support them, as I said to them on, on the weekend, that we as the city of Brisbane, when people choose to come and live in our city, they become part of our Brisbane family. And just as they are impacted, we are here to support them. Similarly, today, many people may have seen that there are extreme fires waging out on the Western Downs. And to our many volunteer rural firefighters who trekked out from our surrounds at, at about four AM this morning, please stay safe and thank you for what you're doing. I would like to actually speak about some very special young people in my community and that is my school leaders. Today, I had sixty students here in City Hall who are school leaders in our local community. And they are such inspirations. They, they really step up to the mark and it was wonderful to have them here, particularly about a dozen students from the Calumvale Special School. Because the obstacles that many of those students have overcome are significant, but it was my privilege to welcome them here on behalf of Brisbane City Council and to embrace them all here as leaders, not only of their schools, but for our city. And I think that in the hands of these young people, our city is going to be in great stewardship in years to come. It was so wonderful to see how they interacted with each other, liaised with each other and they have started that communication process, school to school, school to council, and now they're looking for other ways that they can help fundraise for those earthquake victims. So I think that that's really, really important and it's a great outcome. And I just think that they have great leaders in their school and their school principals and their teachers and I really appreciate the fact that they all came in here today. I would also just like to convey to the chamber that there is a very, very special young lady who lives in my ward. I've known her for a number of years and she is going to be flying out to London on Sunday because on Tuesday, the twentieth of December, she auditioned for the Royal Ballet School in London. Now, over fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred ballerinas from right across Australia, oh sorry, around the world danced to go and receive an invite to London. And Emily Buckley of, in, from Calumvale Ward will be going to London for the final auditions for the London Ballet School. So I just think that this is just an amazing achievement. In the last twelve months, and I want to make sure I get this right, so Emily has performed at QPAC in January last year in the Queensland Ballet's double bill of Swan Lake and the Graduation Ball. She also, last March, competed in her very first Royal Academy of Dance Jaclyn Moreland Awards and was awarded the winner of the intermediate foundation level. And in April, she headed off to Melbourne and trained at the Australian Ballet School for a week as part of the interstate training programme. In May, she was awarded the Jodie White Vona Scholarship with Ballet Theatre Queensland. And in September, the Australian Ballet School offered her invitee status for twenty-twenty-three. So in December, she had a very, very successful audition with the Royal Ballet School London and has been invited to that final audition round. And she will be departing this Sunday for London. And I would just like this opportunity, on behalf of the city of Brisbane, to say to Emily Buckley, we are very proud of your achievement, we are very proud of your dedication and hard work and we wish you well in London. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor, who was first?
Councillor Strung, because I want to finish on a high note.
Okay, councillor Strung.
Okay, that's a bit of a challenge. Well, Chuk Mun Nam Moi, Happy New Year. And I just want to say that the Lunar New Year celebrations this year were probably better than any other year I can remember since coming to work for a state government member back in two thousand and one. And that's saying a lot, actually, but I think because of the COVID years, I think people were really up for a big party. And so we, we started off with the Tet Festival, at least in my ward anyways, and I thought Friday night was big, but Saturday was just, there was cars everywhere. And people were just out to have a great time and, and they did for two days in a row. So I don't know how, what, how many thousands of participants there were for those two days, but then on that Saturday, I, I, I went, I couldn't even get a car parked, I had to go away. And I had a stall there too, because there was just no parking. Anyway, so I went, I went away, but I, my stall operated with my, my team, thank goodness that they got, went there early and got a car parked. Anyway, so I went away and as I was driving home, I went past a couple of other, another huge event by the Catholic Church celebrating the Lunar Festival as well in their, in their premises at Lilac Streak. And it was just massive. And then I was told that, of course, the Buddhist temple on Freeman Road had another huge one. And, and then, then of course I attended about a week later, another temple, which I thought was like a small, a small congregation of, of, of people that occupy this, this temple, but I was wrong. There was, it was almost equal to the Freeman Road, so I'm told. So it was, it was a year that I'll always remember in regards to the Lunar New Year. And, and I, but I just want to pick up on a comment, and I hope this is not a bit of a downer there, councillor Howard, but I just want to make a comment in regards to councillor Huang when he indicated that the Premier was away on a holiday and wasn't able to, to attend the Brisbane celebration. And I can assure him that that's probably the only year I've ever seen her go away at that time of the year. And I worked for her for ten years and, and then of course I've been a councillor for seven, so I, I have a pretty good idea of, of where she travels and when she travels. And, and that was the first, as I say, the first year I can remember that she wasn't able to, other than the COVID years, attend a, the, the Tet Festival or Tet celebrations, which we did have some in the COVID years. So I just want to put that, put that on the record that, you know, we all deserve a holiday when we can take a holiday and obviously this year was at that, at that Lunar New Year time. So anyways, I just wanted to put that on the record and, but yeah, it was a great, great celebration this year and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, I'd like to thank councillor Strung for his comments as well. But I'm going to talk about the Brisbane greeters because today is their eleventh birthday. And I promised them faithfully that I would say something about them in the chamber. So we all know what a fantastic job those Brisbane greeters do. And we really want to thank them for their ongoing commitment to sharing our city sites and stories and visitors and locals alike just love the work that they do. So they showcase our city and they share the untold stories that only locals would know, like the elephant buried under Suncorp Stadium, did you know that? Or that the first Bulemba ferry was actually a rowboat. Now, I'm not sure about all of that, but they've, they've assured me they've checked all of the facts. And not only have they shared Brisbane history, but they're now delivering a new tour, the Twenty-First Century Brisbane. So I'd really want to thank them very, very much for all of the work they do. And I promised faithfully that I would read a poem that one of the greeters, Gail Machokka, has written for the twenty-twenty-three birthday. So here it is. Well, here we are again, another year older. Lucky for us, we greeters are getting bolder. We can tackle almost anything that this city's handed us. We always find our way to town, we walk, take the cat, train or bus. We showcase our city to those who come with smiles on our faces, we welcome everyone. When we get together, we swap facts and stories that keep making our greeting more and more glorious. So greeters, let's kick up our heels and have a good time. Here's cheers to another year, it's gonna be just divine. Happy birthday to us. Happy birthday, Brisbane greeters.
Is there any other further general business?
No one rising to their feet, I haven't missed anyone. I declare the meeting closed.